Nineteen City and Ashawa Planning Board. Mr. Secretary, can you go ahead and take the roll?
Yes. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclaire.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber. Here. Alderman David Tenza. Alderman Marion Mozilia Goya. Gary Rapucci. Maggie Harper.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
That's it.
Okay, so we have a quorum and we have all regular members here, so everybody be participating in voting. We have in front of us October 3rd, 2019 minutes. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether they are acceptable as written or need any kind of amendments to them?
I'll make a motion if you look okay to me.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Peterson. Do accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions or was...
Abstentions.
Okay, so one abstention.
Yes.
Okay, so Communications, Linda?
Scott's gonna do that tonight.
Sure. Good evening, Planning Board members. The following correspondence is received after your mailer was distributed. Please review the following updates for tonight's cases. Case number one, 7 Gaffney Road from Dorothy Clark, attorney for the city. Case number two, it's going to be for 67 Groton Road. Case number three, 31-33 Broad. Case number five, 133 and 135 Amherst. Case number six, that will be for 67 Berkeley Street. Case number seven, there's an email from Deborah Paikum concerning case number seven, Board of Health correspondence, as well as engineering comments. Case number eight, from Wayne Husband, engineering, 31-33 Broad Street, site plan amendment. Case number 10, that would be for 1 Hardy Street. And there's also an email included on that from Richard Malowski. And case number 11, that's 90 Northwest Boulevard, engineering letter. And the final one, case 12, for 57 Northeastern Boulevard.
Okay. All right, thanks. Reported Chairman, Committee and Liaison. Ed, is there anything you have?
We had no HDC meeting.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision is read by myself. The Board will first determine if an application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do decide to take jurisdiction, we'll begin a public hearing, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and a description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the Board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant and our staff. The Chair will then ask, myself will ask for the testimony from the audience. First, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to any plan. If you so choose, you can come forward to the microphone. When you do that, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record before you start. This is your time to go ahead and express any concerns or ask any questions that you might have regarding the plan. I'll next ask for testimony from anybody wishing to come up and speak in favor of a plan. The Board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns raised by the prior public testimony. If so necessary and there remains questions from the public, I will allow one public member to be designated by a group to come forward and to respond to any of those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, I'll end the public hearing and the Board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks of the subject in hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all of our approval criteria established in the national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans and subdivision plans. This time I'd ask for your courteous attention in that if you have a cellphone, then go ahead and put on silent or vibrate. Okay. So I'm gonna start with old business conditional special use permits. There are none. Old business subdivision plans, case number one, Gerald A. Rapucci, 7 Gaffney Street. So that, this item was tabled from an earlier meeting, from September 12th. It had been tabled, awaiting some response that we had requested from Corporation Council that hasn't been received. We have that in our packet. So at this point, my recommendation is that we continue to table it, but I would need a motion from somebody to table it to the next meeting, awaiting further correspondence from our Corporation Council. Mr. Varley?
I'll make a motion to further table new business number one until our next meeting on November 7th, 2019, pending receipt of the legal opinion from Corporation Council.
So we have a motion on old business case number one from Mr. Varley to table to November 7th with the information he presented there. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Peterson?
Someone in the audience has something to ask regarding it?
We're tabled, so it's not, it's not a public kind of session at this point, so. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Anybody, well, excuse me, anybody against it? No? Okay. All right, thanks. If public does have questions from staff, then you can certainly ask them.
This is the third time we've come out here. We're not notified at all. That's very rude.
Yeah, you can talk to them.
Could you please submit into this because we can't come out here and nothing happens.
Okay, next up. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plan, case number two, Janet Georges and Dana Georges, application and acceptance of proposed two lot subdivision. This property is located at 67 Groton Road. And I'd like to hear this subdivision plan along with case number seven, the associated site plan. So when you present, we'll decide on jurisdiction on both first. Let's do that, and then if we take jurisdiction on both, then just present them in sort of one after the other. So regarding case number two, do we have, or do I have a motion as whether that application is complete and ready to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
So motion by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Regarding new business site plan, case number seven, same owner, do we have a motion as to whether that is ready for jurisdiction?
So moved.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. All right, ready to go. Start with the subdivision.
Sure. Thank you. For the record, my name is Paul Chisholm. I am a project manager and professional engineer with Keach Norsham Associates. We're the surveyors and engineers of record for the project. The plan before you tonight is twofold, a subdivision, a one into two subdivision for the lot located at 67 Groton Road. And then the second part of that is to develop the new lot, which is gonna be referenced as Lot 625 moving forward into a new four-unit detached, single-family style homeowner association type condo development. The property in general, as I mentioned, is located at 67 Groton Road in the R40 zoning district. It's surrounded to the west and north by the Groton Woods condominium site, site plan. They own, the family owns the property due east of this property, Lot 323. And then on the south side of Groton Road, there's a number of residences either on Groton Road or Hadley Drive. For those of you that are familiar with the area, you'll recognize this property. It's got a big, beautiful farmhouse, a nice, big red barn, a very well-maintained yard in front of the Georges family's property. And then there's actually like a decorative stone wall kind of running along Groton, Groton Road frontage there as well. For a little bit of background, we received a variance from the ZBA back in July to allow more than one principal building and structure on a single lot, which is common for any condominium site plan type development that comes before the Board here. But I'll start off with the subdivision and get into a little bit more detail with that. The existing lot is referenced as Lot 134. In total, it's about 4.9 acres. After the subdivision, that lot will be reduced to 54,000 square feet plus or minus, so about 1.2 acres. And the new lot, Lot 625, which is the blue lot outlined on the screen here, will be about 161,000 square feet or 3.7 acres. The new lot is also gonna be encumbered with a number of new easements, mainly it's utility-based. There's a new water service that's in water main extension that's gonna be brought into the development. The existing farmhouse and barn is currently on a well. That's gonna be replaced with a new municipal connection. The septic system is located just west of the existing house now. It's in good functional condition. There's really no reason to change it out, so there's gonna be an existing easement over that area as well. In the future, when it does need replacement, it will be replaced on the same lot as the house. It's just an unnecessary expense at the moment. And then third, the last easement is to the east of the yellow lot on the screen here, which is the, again, the house lot. And that's basically a landscape access and utility easement. And that's because there's a number of utilities and small things and access that the family enjoys for both Lot 323 as well as Lot 134 here. And really, the key with that landscape easement is just to allow that yard to maintain the way that it is now, well-manicured, and not really be subject to the confines of the new development here. So it's just kind of to keep the character of the property really as it is today in terms of that side of the development. With the subdivision, we're also proposing two waivers. The first is from land use code 212A1, which is fee in lieu of sidewalks. And the second is 282B9, which is physical features within 1,000 feet of the site. I'd be happy to get into those a little bit later. If you want me to jump over to the site plan, or I can talk a little bit more about them now, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, well, let's go through both the subdivision and your site plan, and then we'll take, we'll go all the questions together.
Yeah, excellent. Sounds good. Okay, so jumping over to the site plan. The plan here is to construct a new private roadway. It's about 350 linear feet. It's labeled as Osprey Lane, which is something that was, come up with between the fire department and the applicant. It's a four-unit condominium. There're gonna be single-family style detached units bound by homeowners association. I should note that the, what you see on the plan here in terms of the actual box shape of the structures is somewhat subject to change between now and final plans that are submitted for recording and approved by the staff here. This is just a good representation of kind of, you know, how much impervious area is probably gonna be there and things like that. And then with that, the common limited-use areas will also be somewhat subject to change as well, once, once the applicant decides formally what specific houses to put where. But generally, it's going to look, look and feel like the plan before you here tonight. Along with all of this, the new road, new houses, there's gonna be a full stormwater management system, which consists of pretreatment and full treatment with an infiltration pond. It exceeds all city standards that are imposed on stormwater. The utilities, as I mentioned, we're gonna bring a new water main in off of Groton Road into service the new houses. Each of the new houses will also be serviced by an individual septic system rather than one, one giant combined system. And along the frontage on Groton Road, there's actually gonna be, we have a landscape plan as well for a nice little landscape buffer that meets the requirements of the ordinance. Again, there's two, two additional waivers with the site plan as well. One of them's the same thing. I think it's more of a procedural item to ask for waiver again for 212A1, which is the fee in lieu of sidewalks. And then there's an additional waiver for 211B, which is to allow variations from the design standards for the road. This isn't your typical cul-de-sac. This is a T-turnaround, and there's gonna be bituminous curb on this rather than slope granite. Again, it's gonna be a private road maintained by the association. The fire department has reviewed this and, and is okay with this. This is not dissimilar to some other condominium developments that have come before the Board and been approved. It was modeled after, after those. So in addition to that, and, and the local process here, the project's going to require two permits from the DES. The first is for subdivision approval, and the second is each of the septic systems will need formal subsurface approval as well. In regard to the septic systems, I also spoke with the health department. We're gonna work with them through the process. They understand that this kind of happens a little bit later in the game as far as where we actually cite those specifically, and we'll work with them to, to meet all their standards and have them witness test pits that we've already performed, but we will have to do that again with them out there, all of those things. We've reviewed the staff reports for both applications. Don't have any issues with anything in there. We also just received earlier this week comments from DPW. Really nothing major there that I see that changes the application or, or again, the look and feel of the, the plans here. Obviously, we'll work through them before submitting final plans. No issues there. We were also advised to contact the post office regarding mailbox placement. So I reached out to them and sent plans over to a gentleman over there who's gonna drive by the site and get back to me and let me know what they're gonna require. If it's a pull-off area for condominium-style mailboxes, we'll add that. If it's individual mailboxes, we'll do whatever they want with that. So as soon as I hear back, we'll put, put that on the plans. And again, that will also be on the final plans as well. We did receive a letter from, in a butter, who's located at 75 Groton Road. Their concerns were how their well might be affected if we were drilling new wells for the new houses in here. They were concerned with the safety of, of their driveway. As they stated, they have a blind driveway, and they were concerned with, by adding another one. And then they were also concerned with the noise and privacy of this development relative to their lot. 75 Groton Road is not a directa butter, but it is separated by a 50-foot strip due west of the project, which is actually part of the Groton Woods development. That's a wooded area. It actually's gonna act basically as a natural buffer between this project and their, and their property. The well issue, we're not actually drilling more wells. Again, we're gonna bring in city water into this development, so I don't anticipate any impacts there. And then I do agree that they probably do have a blind driveway. It's a little bit of a turnaround there. That's why we located the entrance of our drive where we did, so we could comply with all the safety standards that are, you know, required for that. So that's pretty much what I have for you folks. Do you want me to read the waivers into the record? Do you wanna discuss them? How would you like to proceed?
Yeah, we didn't, the waiver request.
Yep. Sure. So for the subdivision, waiver request 19212A1, which is to allow contribution in lieu of sidewalks. The project proposes to subdivide one residential parcel into two lots and construct a new four-unit detached family's residential condominium development. The existing property is located on the north side of Groton Road, where no sidewalks exist within 250 feet of the parcel on that side. The applicant is willing to contribute a fee in lieu of sidewalk construction in accordance with 19212D2. That means the applicant will pay $12,300, which is based on the formula typically used to calculate the fee. There's 282 linear feet of frontage on the property with no sidewalk on either side of the road for that portion. And then they also are taking out the, I guess, the distance for the two new driveways in that area. And that leaves you with 246 linear feet, which is charged at a rate of $50 per foot equals 12,300. Strictly conformly, the regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship because the applicant would otherwise pay for a segmented sidewalk, which would not likely provide a benefit. Granting this waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of this regulation because the fee will be used to construct sidewalks elsewhere in the city where they will be better utilized. So that's that one. 19282B9, plan requirements of existing conditions within 1,000 feet of subdivision boundaries. The project proposes to subdivide one residential parcel into two. The adjacent area was surveyed to locate the important existing features in the immediate project area that were important to consider while developing the subdivision plan and subsequent condominium site plan. Existing features outside of those shown on the subdivision plans were not located because they do not have a bearing on the project. It will not affect the proposal. Strictly conformly, the regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship because the applicant would be subjected to unnecessary financial expense and no benefit would be realized. Granting this waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of this regulation because features were mapped as appropriate for the proposal, and any further detail would be superfluous information. And then for the site plan, again, it's, it's actually the same exact waiver request. I'll, I'll skip that one, if that's all right. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. It's actually, it's a different section. It's 279EE, plan requirements of existing conditions. But again, same, same arguments. And then the last one, 19211B, which is design standards for private streets. The project proposes to construct a new private street to service the proposed four-unit residential condominium development. The proposed roadway meets many of the design standards, however, there are two main differences. No cul-de-sac is proposed. Instead, an NFPA-compliant T-turnaround is proposed. We met with the fire marshal early in the design process to verify this was an acceptable alternative. And two, bituminous Cape Cod berm is proposed in lieu of traditional granite curbing. The roadway will be maintained by a private homeowners association and not by the city, including plowing, maintenance and future repairs or replacement of the road. The road will only service four new detached, single-family homes. All other street grade and cross-sectional thickness comply with the Board of Public Works specifications. Requiring a cul-de-sac or granite curbing will not provide additional benefits for this low-volume road because, because access for safety vehicles will be maintained and stormwater will be controlled just as well with bituminous curb versus granite. Therefore, strictly conformly, the regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship because the applicant would be subjected to an unnecessary financial expense without realizing any additional benefit. Granting the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of this regulation because the use of the property will be maintained in the same spirit as the ordinance.
Okay.
So.
All right. So I have a couple of questions. Can you, can you spend a little bit more time with the easements?
Absolutely.
And, you know, you can, I guess there's, there's really two sort of a west-side easement?
Yeah. You mind if I approach?
Yeah, just bring the mic up with you if you don't mind. You can pull it right out. It's wireless.
Okay, so I'll, I'll work off of this plan, 'cause this kind of gives you the overall picture here. The water main is actually gonna be, the extension is gonna come from this portion right here in Groton Road, come over through all the way to the end of the street. There's gonna be an additional service that's gonna come back around this way to service this house. This easement is just needed all the way through to the street, just in case, you know, any future maintenance or anything like that's required. The second one is the septic system. This is the area of the leach field here. Again, it's in good functioning condition, so the idea is just allow that to be maintained for the time being.
That's the existing leach field for the one on the right.
For this, this house right here. Exactly. Yep. And then lastly, there is an existing easement here that was actually, this, this parcel was actually before the Board last year, I believe. And it was a different-looking subdivision at the time. One of the things that happened was they actually recorded this easement, which they, I think, were proposing and received approval for conditionally a lot line adjustment to take a chunk of this and attach it to, to this house and this property. So this easement's already in place. This is an extension of that, with a caveat of additionally, there's a landscape component to that, that we didn't want this changing because this, this is part of this parcel here with the homeowners association. We didn't want this changing, kind of the character of the, the way that this house and this house look relative to the street. So the idea is really just restrict further development in here and maintain it as a nice landscaped area.
Why, why is that not just part of that as a lot?
It's just, it's a matter of density. I think it's, you know, probably what we could've done is from the zoning board, asked for a different lot line arrangement and keep it that way. But the attorneys felt like it would be best to move forward with something that, that shows an appropriate area for the number of units being proposed.
Is it to satisfy an open space, minimum open space requirement, or?
No, no, it's nothing like that. It's, it's actually just, you know, the R40 zone requires 40,000 square feet. It's a little over 160,000 square feet, which is enough for four units, so it was just to bolster.
So it was just a lot size?
Exactly. Yep. Yep. You got it. But again, we don't want that to change. You know, I, if you've been out there and you've seen it, it looks great. It really does. And so they don't want that. They want the ability to, to keep that looking the way that it is because they feel that it's essential to the character of the property.
And remind me what the deal is with the, sort of the pool in the shed that is on that lot line?
This over here?
Yeah.
Good question. I'm not sure the history. I'll be honest. But, you know, it's, it, both properties, this and this over here are owned by the family and have been owned by the family for a long time. You know, I don't know exactly when that was put up or anything like that, or when even these were split off into two different lots, if, you know, if they, I'm not quite sure. So I, I really can't speak to the history of it, but that's the way it exists today.
So it's like a pre-existing lot line condition that, you know, you obviously would need the other lot to deal with it?
Correct. Yeah. Yep.
But it's gonna end up in the condo?
It's gonna end up in this lot, but again, be restricted. They're not really gonna be, it, the whole idea is to restrict the condo from this area. This is just to get, there's no access. The driveway for this property does go through here and, and through here. So, you know, the idea is just to kind of keep these separate, or kind of together, but also kind of separate from everything going on out here at the same time.
So the easement serves the function of...
Correct.
Keeping that inaccessible to the condo owners?
Correct. Yes. Yep.
But will they be paying to maintain that?
The, the easement will give these folks the right to maintain this area. So no, I would say not. However, the documents have not been written up yet. That's the intent of them. If there's specific things you would want to put in there, we didn't want to do that before, kind of, talking, talking to you, and we're, we're happy to take your, your input into consideration there.
Yeah, I'm assuming you'd address that in the condo docs somehow?
It will be, yes. Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I think they just don't want people coming over and, and jumping in their pool, quite frankly.
Yeah.
You know? Yep.
So with regard to the water main extension, is there any, any thought, I mean, is there any way to, to add a stub for that for the future of butters that's out in the easement area or something? So we don't have to rip the road up again if the next house down wants?
That would be a pretty long service. The, the main is actually stubbed right at Hadley Drive.
Oh, it's right there?
Yeah, that's like the end of it. So we're, we're tapping in kind of just, just short of that.
You're at the end?
Yes, exactly. That's not a thought that we've had yet. It's just not a wish of, of the applicant.
But to get, so to get the line further down, it would go further down the street?
Yes, the main, the main would. Yes.
Okay. All right. You're literally the end of the main?
Correct. Yes.
All right, that makes sense.
Yeah, normally, we'd like to bring it in right with the driveway entrance, but it just, it's not there. It's not there now in Groton Road, so.
Yeah.
Question regarding that?
Yeah, Mr. Peterson.
So does that water line go up into Hadley, or does it end right there on Groton Road?
That's a good question. I, I believe it does go up into Hadley. I'm not 100% sure on that.
Okay. Just asking.
Yeah, I mean, the map shows, the, the drawing shows it to go that way, but it kind of drops off.
Yeah, it looks like there's a gate. I don't know how far up it goes.
Other questions for the applicant? Mr. Weber?
On your, let me see. As to the spillway?
Yes.
In a heavy rainstorm, is that engineered so that it will not go onto the abutters property?
What do you consider a heavy rainstorm?
100 years.
100 years? There would be. What it is, is actually a design point that we've looked at specifically, what's going there pre. It all kind of funnels to that area, to the back corner here. So we did look at that specifically. It's less in the post-development condition than in the pre-development condition. That pond is sized to handle the 10-year storm, like infiltrate that 100%. In the 15, 100, there is a little bit of spill over.
Okay. So you're saying currently, there's a spill from this property already that goes automatically onto that person's property?
That's correct. The way that this site is, exists contour-wise, it goes to that corner as well as a couple other places. We've analyzed each one of those locations to make sure that all of the runoff from pre to post is reduced. And in that location where we know it's called getting funneled there, so we, you know, you don't have to infiltrate the full 10-year storm. You don't have to do that. We're doing that just because we want to make sure, you know, if you have a big rainstorm like that, that there's, you know, extra precautions were taken to make sure there's no issues on the abutting land.
Okay. When you do the development, will you, the engineer be looking at make sure that it is done correctly as per the drawings?
I believe there's a requirement now from DPW that says that we have to, as the engineer, submit a letter or something along those lines. Is that true?
It's also a stipulation in.
Okay.
I thought so, yep. So, so yes, I guess I will be out there.
First, I had a question about the, there's this marked gravel road that's existing now. Is that, is that going to be removed?
Yes, a portion of it, a portion of it will be removed.
A portion that would be behind units three and four there?
Yep, exactly, and in the area of the detention pond, or the infiltration pond, so, yep.
Then in terms of the waiver request for the private road, you mentioned the curbing, not having the granite curbing and then using the T turnaround instead of the cul-de-sac. Are those the only two waiver?
Yep, it's a standard.
From the design standard?
Yep, it's a standard 28-foot wide road. The T portion that sticks out to the right on the road is 24 feet, which is, you know, technically, I guess, the turnaround and not part of the road, so we didn't make that 28 feet. But yes, that's correct. It's the same gravel bases, it's the same slope requirements and everything like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallinger?
Yes. Have you verified applicable site distance criteria satisfied?
Absolutely.
And I guess I just don't mean from a plan view perspective. You mentioned that there was a stone wall there. Have you verified you've got proper vertical clearance as well with respect to requisite height requirements?
Absolutely. There is a site distance plan here. It's sheet eight of 13. You'll see that where you're actually looking from is actually in front of the wall, so that's not a concern. But yes, we did go out there in the field and check it as well, and you can see it.
All right. And this is, this is just a minor comment. I think I see it just on the ex-con and on your topo subdivision plan. Groton Road is actually New Hampshire 111A, not New Hampshire 111.
Okay.
It's not state-maintained anymore, so I don't think you're offending anybody, but.
Sure. We'll make that correction to make sure that it's, that it's right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you proposing any monument signs or anything at that entrance?
I don't, I don't think so. Potentially, not at the moment. I guess it's, if it's something that they want to do, then they'll comply with all the sign regulations, but.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a sign, is that, should that, does that need to be on this site plan? Or is that an amendable, could that be a?
Yeah, we could do that as an amendment later on, and it would be reviewed through the zoning department for any signs.
Okay. And like site distance issues with signs, which we get, that would be looked at as part of that amendment as well? Okay.
Yeah, realistically, I think they'll, they'll make that decision. I think right now, they're leaning towards not having one. If that changes, my guess is it'll change before we submit final plans anyway, so we'll know, yep.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant on either the subdivision or the site plan?
I just had a couple.
Ms. Harper?
Just wondering why you decided not to have a light just on the drive coming into the subdivision?
There's actually a street light not that far from there, kind of just to the, as you're looking at the plan, just to the right of Hadley Drive. Individual units will have lights, just no formal street lights, yeah.
And then my other quick question was just who is going to be responsible for the septic maintenance for this area?
So the idea right now is to put in individual systems.
Right.
And that way, that each unit will be responsible for their own, yeah.
Okay.
We just see that as a cleaner way moving forward.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. At this point in time, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have questions with the plan? For the subdivision or the site plan? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Any further questions from the board for the applicant or the staff during the hearing? Hearing none? I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and move into the meeting, so. Okay, so we've got the two items, new business number two and number seven. Pretty straightforward. There was that one letter from the abut, I think that one in the water. It was obviously addressed by the fact that they're not drilling wells, so I don't think that's a big issue myself. Anybody else have any discussion points or things they want to talk about? Mr. Barley?
I would just say, Mag, if you raised a good point before about the easements and then, you know, who has the obligation, so the existing homeowner has the right to maintain that area, but should we maybe ask the applicant to clarify in the easements that the existing homeowner has the obligation to?
In the condo docs, you mean, or?
Or within the easement.
Okay.
Because the easement would be separately recorded, I think, so.
Okay.
So just to clarify that the existing owner has the right, but also the obligation, so it's not the obligation of the homeowners association.
We could just put that as a stipulation.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Other questions, concerns? If not, I would say if someone wants to make a motion, I would start with the subdivision plan and a reminder about the couple of waiver requests and the specific number, the 12,300 that's been proposed for the sidewalk contribution. And I think as far as the date for the letter from Mendoza, do we have that date? I don't know, it's not in the report.
Yeah, I'm just looking for it.
Actually, on the subdivision, you can actually strike number three because you have a happy letter on for the lot line adjustment.
Okay.
But the actual date for the site plan would be October 11th.
October 11th, okay. So that would be for number four. Okay. All right. So anybody want to make a motion regarding the subdivision plan? Mr. Barley?
I'll make a motion to approve new business number two, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section 190-138G with a total of eight stipulations. The first being a waiver request with respect to existing conditions. The waiver reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The second being a waiver with respect to sidewalks. The waiver reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and indicating that the applicant has agreed to make a contribution in the amount of $12,300 in lieu of sidewalk construction. Original stipulation number three being removed. Stipulation number four, with respect to easements, being amended to indicate that the easements shown on the plan that are in favor of lot 67 confirm in the text of the easements that lot 67 has both the right and the obligation to maintain those areas. And then stipulations five through nine renumbered accordingly as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Barley to approve with the eight stipulations as stated. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. How about regarding number seven, new business number seven? Mr. Barley?
I'll make a motion to approve new business number seven, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section 190-138G. The total of nine stipulations, the first two being waiver requests. Number one, with respect to existing conditions, reading that the waiver is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, also being a waiver request with respect to certain design standards for private streets, and specifically with respect to the use of bituminous curbing instead of granite curbing and using a T ending to the street instead of a cul-de-sac, and that also read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Three is written in the staff report. Four is written in the staff report with the addition of the date of October 11th, 2019, and five through nine is written in the staff report.
So we have a motion to approve new business number seven by Mr. Barley and with the stipulations as he stated. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thanks. All right, so, moving on, I'm going to move to new business subdivision plan, case number three, BRAR Holdings LLC, application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation. This property is at 27 and 31 through 33 Broad Street, and we would like to hear that subdivision plan followed directly by new business site plan, case number eight, with the same owner and the same properties. So at first, I'll ask the board, is anybody a chance to review new business subdivision plan, case number three, and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
We have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Regarding new business site plan, case number eight, same owner, do we have a motion as to whether that package is ready to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, so you can go ahead. Let's take the subdivision plan first, but.
Sure.
Like the previous, go right into the site plan.
Okay. Good evening. My name's George Chadwick with Betray Design. Tonight, the first plan in front of you is for a lot line adjustment. We're looking to adjust the lot line between parcels located at 27 Broad Street, which is an existing single-family house, and 31-33 Broad Street, which is an existing dentist. Parcels zoned urban residence. We're looking to transfer 3,318 square feet from lot 27 to lot 31-33, 31 and 33 actually as two street addresses. Leaving both lots in conformance with the zoning ordinance. So by this lot line adjustment, they do all meet all the criteria within the zoning I'd like to just identify on the, on this plan, basically, there's a parking configuration on the dentist lot or lot 31-33 that is kind of out of the ordinary in a way. It is angled parking. It is a parking that brings you from Broad Street out to Pine Hill Road. There is several of the existing parking spaces that are on that plan that don't meet current regulations. Some of them within the setbacks, some of them are parallel parking, some are in the right-of-way in the city right-of-way. So just wanted to bring that up now, earlier than it'll come, pull around when I get to the site plan. There is a waiver that's being requested from that, for that lot line adjustment. It's 190 282B9, and similar to the plan in front of me tonight, the regulations require buildings and topography be shown within 1,000 feet. Providing that additional topography building location is an expense to the owner that we feel doesn't give any additional beneficial information, although we did show all the abutting properties in the homes, in the driveways, and things of that on the lots. If you like, I can go right into the site plan. I think it's a very simple lot line adjustment.
Yeah, you can go right, go through both of them and then we'll ask questions together.
Okay. So now, I guess I'd like to talk about the.
Site plan. Grab the mic if you go over there. If you want to talk from the, from there, you can. Just make sure you grab the mic. Either way.
I'll stay here for a minute. So basically, it's an existing dentist office. What we're looking to do is add some additional parking spaces and bring the parking lot into conformance with the city zoning ordinance. Maybe I should back up a little bit, give the board a little bit of history. Back in 1972, the zoning board of adjustment allowed a variance for the dentist office. It's in a residential zone, so in 1972, they did allow for the dentist office. And I think in 2013, he went back in front of the zoning board to add on to the dentist office, and I believe he got a special exception at that time. With this parking adjustment, it meets all the town zone, or city zoning requirements. We are looking to create a situation where there is a one-way access off of Broad Street, but a two-way access onto Pine Hill Ave. Currently, as I spoke earlier, you look at the lot line adjustment, although they do make a wrong-way direction into the site currently, and they treat the Pine Street, Pine Hill Street access as a two-way, it wasn't designed that way. I don't believe it shows it that way on the current site plan that the city has for the lot. So what we're looking to do is create a two-way access off of Pine. We will put Do Not Enter signs up in the front, up adjacent to the building, so that we don't make an access onto Broad Street. There is two waivers that are needed for this plan. One is for a lighting plan. That's 190-279N. What my client would like to do would be relocate the existing lights that are on-site and basically move them back to the backside of the new pavement in section 190 279P, which requires a landscape plan. We believe, well, first of all, I guess all we're doing is cutting a single tree as part of this improvements, and he feels that the site's a well-landscape site. There was some discussion about the air conditioning units out behind the building. I don't believe they can be seen from the street, but if the board does, you know, would like, we could add a few bushes around the AC units, but they're not visible from the And then lastly, I guess there is a small infiltration system that's going to be put under the new pavement. It's a small cul-de-sac chamber. Will connect into the roof drain for the existing dentist office, and that's to mitigate the increase in pavement that's being put on the lot. As we all know, Broad Street was recently paved, and there's a moratorium in us cutting into Broad Street originally. We would have liked to have a two-way access on Broad Street as well. Not able to do that because of the moratorium and cutting into Broad Street. With that, I guess I'm here to answer any questions the board may have.
Have you looked at sort of the width of the entrance from Broad Street? Is that a double, is that curb cut, like a double-wide cut?
It's 20 feet wide.
20, so.
Yeah, so it doesn't meet the current regulations, but we are limited to touching the curb cut on Broad Street because of the moratorium.
Okay, so you can't narrow it?
I can't widen it, I can't narrow it. I really can't do anything to it.
Okay.
But we do, I think one of the engineering comments was that, you know, we put thermoplastic arrows out so they last and they don't just fade away, so we will do that.
You're putting new arrows down?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And so the lighting, just to be clear, the existing lights that are already there are essentially being slid?
Back. They're being moved approximately, I don't know, what's that, about 18 feet? Back, to the back edge of the existing, or to the proposed parking spaces.
Do you know, I mean, there's a, there's a fixture lighting detail in the packet. It doesn't look like a cutoff fixture or anything. Do you know?
I, we, if the board chooses, we will make sure there's sort of a cutoff. Put on that fixture if at all possible.
I guess the concern would be obviously the lot to the right on the plan.
Right. And I would like just mention that the dentist owns that lot as well.
Okay.
But I do know that the lot could be sold in the future.
Sure. That's the only question I have at this time. Anybody else have questions for the applicant from the board? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I just noted in our staff report, there's a reference to the fact that it's, the lot is extremely close in terms of meeting the open space requirement. I'm still wondering if you could just address that. How you're meeting that requirement and what the breakdown is.
I'd have to, mind if I grab this plan?
Should be a note right on the plan. See if I can see this. As far as the open space goes, you've got a requirement of, does that say 50%? And we're at 50 point, does that say 2? I think 50.2%. So we are, we are very close.
I did cross it out.
Only take the amount of land away from the existing lot that was absolutely necessary. But we do meet, meet the requirement.
What's the, what's the increase in impervious surface as a result of?
Again, there should be a note on that plan. If I can grab this, I can read that one.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, there isn't. I apologize. I thought there was a note on there regarding the amount of impervious surface. I guess I couldn't give you that exact answer right now.
Other questions?
I can add one more thing to that regarding the open space. The existing parcel as it stood was 54% in its existing configuration before the lot line adjustment. So we're decreasing it by 3, 3%, 4%.
Okay. Other questions from the board? All right, at this point in time, I would ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or have questions on the plan? Please go ahead and come on up to the microphone. State your name and address for the record, and go ahead and ask your questions or give your concerns.
I'm Dan Sloan. I live at 8 Westfield Street. Kind of an indirect abutter. I'm one house behind Pine Hill Avenue. I've had a lot of experience with this property as he was my dentist when he got the original variance to become a dentist in that spot. And now I live on Westfield Street. Originally, when they got the variance to be in the residential zone, it was a much smaller company. Broad Street wasn't as busy as it is now. And they've been good neighbors. We haven't really had any issues. But as things progressed, they've expanded, and now there's more and more traffic. And this new plan looks to me like they're going to really make the entrance on Pine Hill Avenue, which is definitely residential, the main entrance for this place, and the main exit, which is going to just increase the traffic. The next street up, Sullivan Street, is one-way just for that reason. So people won't use it as a cut-through. And by having this here, you're going to come down Westfield Street, go right through the parking lot, or come in the other way and go up Westfield Street to cut over to Amherst Street. So we've seen a pretty good increase in traffic. There's a lot of young families here now, people walking their dogs and such. And I just think the extra traffic that's going to be involved here is going to be an issue. For my opinion, I would like to see the Pine Hill entrance closed completely. And that would be the buffer zone between the commercial Broad Street and the residential where we are. But I don't know.
Yeah, you understand the moratorium. They actually don't have the option to make that a two-way exit.
Well, it's a two-way exit now. They want to put more parking along that entrance. That's why it can't be two-way anymore.
Well, I, I'll check with the applicant. They talked about it was a 20-foot curb cut, which is.
Well, but people use it as two-way now. It's not marked one.
It's not in compliance with a two-way.
But by putting all these parking places there, then it's really going to be tight. Because now you're going to have all these parking places lining that entrance.
Sure, yeah.
And it's a one-way entrance, so.
Yeah. I think the applicant did talk about they would like to do that.
Yeah, I understand that.
They're actually not allowed to do it by our.
I understand. Not now. But it is an RA zone as well. And, you know, we're seeing, you know, we're feeling like we're being encroached on by the extra business, the extra traffic. Not that they're bad neighbors. Like I said, we have no issues at all. They keep the place clean and, and there's not a problem. But it's going to increase the traffic.
Okay.
That's my issue.
Thanks. Well, we'll certainly bring it up with the applicant. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned with the plan?
John Foley, 25 Broad Street. Again, I live on Pine Hill Ave. My driveway's on Pine Hill Ave, so I would be greatly affected by the new restrictions. I know you're saying it's a moratorium, but we live there, and they do use Broad Street as their in-and-out. On occasion, they do use the backside, which, that should be a fire road exit only for the fire department, as it is across the street, for the daycare, as it, the new Dunkin' Donuts has one access off of Broad Street. It's a business.
Right.
Who wants to create Pine Hill Ave as a commercial road? That's basically what they're asking to do. They also want to take 3,000 square feet, is that correct, of the 27 for land?
Something, I'd have to look at it and see what the number is. But I can have them clarify.
Yeah, it's about.
So now they're asking to make 27 turn some of its land into commercial use. By doing that, do we set a precedence that 27 can ask for this at a later date? And also, my property 25 at a later date to make my access on Pine Hill Ave, commercial use also?
That's a zoning thing, not a planning thing, so it's not really our board.
Would you be creating that precedence?
We can ask that of staff or something like that. They may know.
If you're asking, would an abutting lot be able to use their property for a commercial use?
If you allow this, does that set precedence for 27 and 25?
No, I mean, I think the answer is it would have to go, anyone who would wanted to utilize a commercial use that wasn't permitted in the zone would have to go get zoned.
Well, that piece of property isn't permitted. They're asking, without a zoning, without a zoning permission, to grab that land and create it as commercial to get their space required.
Right, I think, I think it's two different issues.
But for us tonight, it isn't, because they're trying to grab residential property and create commercial without going through zoning. That's not right. They're jumping, they're jumping, so if they set precedent tonight, 25 can do the same and 27 can do the same. That's what you're, that's the precedent I feel you're setting tonight.
No, I don't think that's correct, but.
So you're saying that in a future use, I could take 27 and just give some of it to commercial? Because now I feel it can make in Pine Hill Ave commercial anyways, because you're allowing the in-and-out tonight. That should be a fire road exit, just like across the street. They've been abusing it, which we didn't have a problem, because I agree with my neighbor. It was a good neighbor. But now they're increasing the traffic. They're parking on Pine Hill Ave. They're making this a very large business that is residential. No one on that other side, it's, Broad Street's right there. They should be coming in and out of Broad Street. I know it's a moratorium, but that's theirs to deal with, not us.
Yeah, we can talk, I mean, the planning board doesn't have the authority.
I understand completely. I just want to get it on record so that at a later date, when all these decisions are made, we can go back to these decisions. My biggest concern is taking residential property without proper process, turning it from a different zoning. Now it's becoming commercial. Can't take 3,000 square feet of residential and just make it commercial. It's got to go through zoning.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak or opposition or concerned of a question? Come on up.
I'm Deborah Harvey, 15 Pine Hill Ave. I'd just like to echo what you said. The staff and clients are already using Pine Hill Ave as an in-and-out, as well as Broad Street in-and-out. Staff is already, and clients are already parking on Pine Hill Ave. Pine Hill Ave is being used currently for commercials, not zoned for commercial. And by doing this, it is absolutely creating Pine Hill Ave as a commercial area. It's not what it's zoned for. Also, it's, you know, we can't do anything about the fire trucks that use Pine Hill Ave already. It's going to increase traffic. We've already, like I said, seen an increase, and it's just going to continue. It's not what it's zoned for.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Come on up.
I live directly across the street at 11 Pine Hill Ave. Cindy Sloan.
Okay, thanks. Make sure you lean in towards the mic. It doesn't pick up too far away.
I'm directly across the street, 11 Pine Hill Ave. My concern, as he already talked about, is the, taking the private. But Pine Hill Ave has no sidewalks. We have a lot of walkers. We have kids that walk up and down to school every day, to Amherst Street School, at the time when the dentist's office is open and coming home. And for, to make, to take all of their business and dictate that they have to come out into Pine Hill. Currently, yes, they can come into Pine Hill. They go in and out of Broad Street, too. But to now dictate that every car has to come on to Pine Hill, and then either Sullivan or Westfield or whatever. But that they have to use Pine Hill to be, get in, because we were told originally that the signs were going to say they can't come in from Broad Street or go out. Every car that comes to that office now has to use Pine Hill. That's my issue.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Come on up.
Kevin Loughlin, 16 Pine Hill Ave. I bought the dentist parking lot. And my problem is that taking all that extra space is going to create a lot more snow plowing, a lot more issues that would come into the neighborhood and just, as it is now, when they're plowing, they plow the end of the driveway, you can't see getting out of your driveways and everything. And I think with a lot more tar and everything, there's going to be a lot more snow and a lot more impact on the neighborhood, on the Pine Hill Road. Cars coming in and out, if they come out and they try to get out Sullivan Street, that's already a nightmare to get out onto Broad Street from there because of the Dunkin' Donuts car. You go to pull out Sullivan, and the Dunkin' Donuts car are pulling out at you. So you're adding more traffic to where there's already a traffic issue going on. So I think it's only adding more problems to what we already have at the end of Sullivan and Broad Street. So with the traffic coming around that way. So I just think it's going to make it more difficult for the neighborhood and for everybody going back and forth. And I see many people, as everyone has said, walking up and down the street. And so I just feel they're already parking on Pine Hill, on, in front of my house and in front of the Whittity area. So it does create an issue, so just so you know.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay. I'd ask for the applicant, give you the opportunity. So there's a couple of specific things. Maybe you can talk specifically about traffic generation, pre and post. And then maybe parking spaces before and after. There seems to be a concern about people parking on Pine Hill, whether this plan makes that worse or better.
Sure.
Talk about it.
Sure. I think all the comments I heard from the abutters have to do, or a majority of them had to do with, you know, with traffic. And they're all saying that there be an increase in traffic. We're not increasing the practice. There's no, the building isn't getting larger. We're not, there's not more people coming to the business as a result of this. All we're doing is taking the non-conforming spaces that are in the setback, the parking that's on Pine Hill Road currently, and bringing it onto the lot. So so far, everything I heard, we're helping. As far as the increased traffic on Broad Street, I believe the last gentleman at 16 Pine Hill had concerns with traffic on Broad Street. There will be no entrance onto Broad Street. So there will not be an issue with the Dunkin' Donuts across the street or any of the other conflicting movements from access from the parcel onto Broad Street. Currently, there is a one-way circu, supposed to be a one-way circulation as on the current approved plan by the planning board that goes from Broad Street to Pine Hill Road. That's why all its parking spots are angled in that direction. Do people sort of jockey around and currently head out to Pine Street? Yeah, they do. I've seen it while I've been there. But yes, there will be all vehicles entering Pine Street. But there was a question regarding snow removal and the embank, the snow embankments and stuff along Pine Hill Road. Now we'll be able to clear them back and keep them further back because of no parking in that area and the cars that may, may be parked there during a snowstorm. So we'll be able to, the city will be able to keep Pine Hill Road clear, and we'll be able to clear our, our entrance and keep it more open. And then there was one question regarding fire access. I think having two accesses to a long, narrow parcel is a good thing for fire access, being able to get a fire truck to, you know, move through the parcel. I think that's pretty much all the questions I heard. All had to do with either an increase in traffic, which we're not doing, or the traffic on Pine Hill Ave. The cars being parked on Pine Hill Ave and so on and so forth. I can give you some quick numbers. In the AM peak hour, there is only 11 cars that will be exiting the site. 62% will be entering, 38% will be exiting. So about four cars will be exiting during the AM peak hour. During the PM peak hour, there's a total of 13 cars, 38% entering. So it's about four entering and, and the remainder exiting during the PM peak hour. So maybe we're talking about eight, let's say eight vehicles. And this is all based on medical dental office use in the IT manual.
Okay. Mr. Varley?
Thanks. Yeah, I was just wondering, did you consider maintaining the design of the original plan? Understanding that it's not currently operating that way. But the one-way flow, so did you consider making it a one-way flow? So in Broad Street, out Pine Hill?
You're saying narrow down the entrance onto Pine Hill to be a one-way entrance out?
Well, I mean, I think I heard you say that that is what's on the current approved plan, is one-way in through Broad Street, out through Pine Hill.
If you look at the existing conditions plan, I think the entrance onto Pine Hill is, I don't have a scale with me, but it's probably about, well, it's kind of, the pavement there is kind of wide, because people park in it. But it's probably, I could guess. I should have brought a scale with me. I apologize. You have a scale? Thank you. So the current pavement width on Pine Hill now is about 40 feet in width. I'm reducing it down to 24 feet. So if anything, we're making that intersection more safe than having 40 feet of pavement. What actually happens is there's parking, there's striped parking spaces out into the right-of-way. And there's a parallel space out into the right-of-way as it's striped today and as is on the approved site plan by the, in the files.
Right, I guess, I guess I was asking a slightly different question, which is, did you consider one-way circulation? You know, so a lot of the comments from. You know, so a lot of the, the comments from the abutters were with respect to, in understanding your point generally about traffic, but that, that the, you know, the volume of traffic that would be on Pine Hill specifically. So I was just wondering if, if you would consider just having it a one-way in Broad Street, one-way out Pine Hill?
We did not consider that. I believe we could probably do that. I don't know that that eliminates the, um, traffic concern of, of some of the abutters in that, a majority of the traffic does enter off of Broad Street when it enters the site. So, the few cars that are on Pine Hill, I would assume, would become, and it's an assumption on my part, would be coming from the neighborhoods in that area. I'm not real familiar with the area, but I don't think it would be any shorter distance for someone to go up Pine Hill to enter the parcel than it would be to come from Broad Street. But no, um, I guess we could make it a one-way that direction, all that way.
Do you have, what's your, what's your estimate of the cars, you know, on the normal day that actually currently would come in that way? Do you have that in your calculation?
That come in off of Pine Hill?
Yeah.
We did not do a full traffic study, no.
Yeah, okay.
We, uh...
You mentioned it was, you think it's at least a sixty percent off of?
Um, in the AM peak?
Yeah.
It's sixty-two percent total entering the site.
Okay.
A portion of that, or a good majority of that, would be off of, uh, Broad Street, I would assume. That's where most of the traffic is located, is out on Broad Street. And, and there's really no, I don't think there's a reason for someone to get onto Pine Hill unless they've lived in that area, I would think.
We talked about the parking. We talked about plowing. Any, any other questions from the board at this point on the rebuttal? The zoning question that came up, I don't, do you have any understanding, I mean, it's, it's not really the purview of this board, but I don't know if anybody has any better understanding of that.
Maybe I can help. I mean, the project would've already gone to the zoning board before it would've come here.
Yeah. We did have a zoning review in our initial meeting. They were with us. It didn't come up as an issue. The variances that, that they got were use variances. They weren't dimensional variances. So they had nothing to do with lot size, open space amount, any of the dimensional type of numbers. It had to do with the use being in a residential zone.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, I think the issue that the gentleman was raising is that because of the lot line relocation, that it's changing the configuration of the existing lot that has the use variance. So I'm just wondering, maybe staff, is there a threshold at which it would require further zoning relief because of the amount of increased lot area, or? I mean, I don't think you can simply, you can't simply take another lot and convert, you know, you couldn't convert the whole street to a commercial, you know, a commercial use simply by a lot line relocation, right?
Correct. You, you would have to get relief from the zoning board of adjustment. I mean, back in two thousand thirteen, they did get a special expen, uh, exception to expand. If they were increasing the size of the building, that would've, I believe, kicked it back to zoning board, and they would've had to get a special exception again to expand. It did go through review with the zoning manager, and he did not feel at this time it would have to go back to the zoning board for relief. And I did also want to say, the fire marshal did review it. I know the one gentleman brought up about how Dunkin' Donuts has that bar across the one exit. They did not request that at this site.
And actually, the city's traffic engineer, Wayne Husband, reviewed this report as well.
I just have a quick question.
Ms. Harper?
Do you know approximately how many patients per day are seen at the business?
I cannot answer that question, I apologize. I'm not, I'm a patient of the business, so, I've only been involved in the project for a short amount of time here. I did not ask.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I know there was a few folks that had some questions. You've heard the applicant's response. The way our board works here, if there remains a question, I'd accept that you get together, pick one person who wants to come up and speak for the group. If that's okay, we can do that, so. You can take a couple minutes and talk if you want to, but it's not a problem. Just go ahead, state your name and address.
Yeah, John Foley, twenty-five Broad Street.
Thanks.
The zoning question?
Yeah.
We weren't even aware that there was a question brought to the zoning board as abutters about that extra land grab, so we're concerned that we were skipped over in that process as abutters.
Yeah, it wasn't, it didn't go before the zoning board.
So something like that does not need to go in front of the zoning board, is that what you're telling us?
Right, which, what staff is saying is that it is part of the plan review, right? So when, when a plan comes in, it has to come before this board, it would be reviewed to determine whether it needs zoning relief.
And you, no one believes that needs zoning relief.
Right. And so the determination was made by the, by the, you know, the individual in the city who's, who's the head of the zoning department that, that was, did not require zoning relief.
Okay. Secondly, the gentleman, by no means is being disingenuous, I, 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 he truly doesn't understand the neighborhood, it's, it's blatantly obvious. Pine Hill Ave, when you come down Broad Street from Amherst Street, is the most convenient way to get to that dentist's office, because you're not gonna stop with heavy traffic on Broad Street trying to get into that right-hand turn, when you can come right off Pine Hill Ave, which is a massive mouth, come right down that residential road, right into the parking. It's constant, it's a dentist's office. It's, it's a forty-five minute visit at most for most people. It's constant flow of traffic. It's not a little in the AM, a little in the evening. And my neighbor's right. All our kids walk all the way to Charlotte Ave. They use Pine Hill Ave. It's our residential road. The Dunkin' Donuts does create a mess on Sullivan Street. Just look at the accident reports. I can't believe the traffic wasn't brought up. There's so many accidents there now. You are allowing, with this permission, to have everybody come out of their back, take a left, take a left, and dump over here, because they wanna shut off Broad Street. They don't want Broad Street to be convenient. Then they wanna come, they're gonna take a right, go right past all our houses, and shoot up to the top of the peak to get back onto Broad Street, using a residential road for a commercial piece of property. It's just unjust. They have to live with what they bought, just like we live with what we bought. They can't make us resident, us commercial to meet their new desire. This wasn't a problem when they didn't grow. They grew, and now it's created a problem for them. It shouldn't be our problem. I really think this should be opposed. Thank you.
So just a quick question for ya. So, your primary concern, to your experience, I should say, being in the area, is there's a significant amount of, of traffic on Pine?
Well, of course, because that's...
Goes into the site.
Well, that's the most convenient way to get into it, not, and I agree, it's a tight turn, it's twenty feet. No one disagrees with that. We all live there. It's a tight turn. The convenient way is Pine Hill Ave. And that's not people in the neighborhood. If you're, that's your dentist, the first couple times, you're gonna experiment a better way to get in, and everyone knows that. Forty-foot berth in the back is so much easier to get into than the twenty-foot berth on busy one-thirty. I know it stinks, it's twenty-five thousand cars going up and down there every day, but everyone on that opposite side manages with one entrance and one, and one exit. It's just everyone loops. The daycare loops, the Dunkin' Donuts loops, they're, I think they have to follow the same rules. They're not residential, they're business. They own the property next door, have 'em demolish that and do, use their driveway, but to make us suffer for their expansion, and it is an expansion. If you need more spaces, it's 'cause you're bigger. That's just blatantly obvious. If they weren't bigger and busier, they wouldn't need to adjust their parking. And it does affect the kids in the neighborhood. That walk from this neighborhood all the way down Pine Hill Ave, across Amherst Street to the crosswalk to Charlotte Ave, we are a walking neighborhood elementary. So that's why we're concerned.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, at this point, I would...
Chair, if I may, your thoughts?
Yes, yeah, you can, we may have a couple questions for ya, so.
Sure.
Before I close.
So what I just heard was, um, the traffic that would be entering the site off of Pine Hill Road. And what I heard was that it's more convenient to use Pine Hill Road from Broad Street because of the wide open mouth onto, onto Broad Street, and so on and so forth. I guess first I'd like to say that if the traffic was on Broad Street, there is a twenty-foot wide entrance, which is wider than a normal entrance, to make that unrestricted right-hand turn from Broad Street into the site. So if I was going to the dentist, I wouldn't have gone, and I hear what he says, I wouldn't have gone up Pine Hill Road, I would've stayed on Broad Street. The sign is on Broad Street, their address is Broad Street, and make that unrestricted right-hand turn into the parcel. Secondly, um, I heard that currently they make that left off of Broad Street, I mean, off of Pine Hill Road into the site. The, the parking spaces are all angled the opposite way. So for that movement to occur, they'd have to do like a three-point jockey to get into the parking space the way it's been painted.
Right.
So I guess I'd have to question a little bit about how much traffic currently goes that way. And, and lastly, the entrance is a, the width of that entrance is something that the planning board could waive. If the board felt that it would be safer to have two-way access both ways, and give us a waiver of that down to twenty feet instead of the twenty-four feet at the, the entrance off of Broad Street, to help eliminate some of the traffic onto, that would be exiting out onto Pine Hill Road, that's something that the board could do. They could, they could waive that regulation.
With the moratorium? With the moratorium, we could waive that?
I think he's suggesting...
I'm just saying, leave it alone.
It would affect the curb cut.
I'm not saying change anything, just leave it be the way it is.
But I mean, in your opinion, that's a twenty-foot curb cut?
It is twenty feet wide. We've surveyed it, and it's twenty feet wide.
Civil engineer, I mean, is a twenty-foot curb cut safe for two-way?
I believe it is. There's some towns in New Hampshire, and I don't mean to compare, you know, your city to other towns, but there's some towns in New Hampshire that have town roads that are twenty feet wide. Private developments, a lot of them are trying to reduce the pavement width down to twenty feet wide, make it a calming development. You hear that all the time from people in subdivisions, at least I do. Trying to slow down traffic and everything. So they're trying to reduce road widths down to, you know, twenty feet. So is it something that I would feel safe if it was a two-way access? They do it today, and there's no change. We're not increasing the size of the building, we're not increasing the, the number of patients, we're trying to eliminate some of the non-conforming parking spaces, and yes, we are gaining six spaces. That's what we're talking about. There's twenty-four on the site, twenty-four illegal spaces on the site, and we're making it to thirty legal spaces that meet your regulations.
Would, if that was a two-way exit onto Broad Street, would it, would it be safer as a right exit only? Does that matter in a narrow way?
No, it probably doesn't.
Just 'cause of the volume of people, it's not really much stacking, you know?
Right, right. It, we probably could create that right out only onto Pine, Pine Hill.
Oh, make it right out?
I, I think that's what you said, right?
No, I was thinking about, onto Broad, you know, 'cause crossing Broad is, can be something.
Yeah, I, currently it's a two-way access, although substandard in size.
Yeah.
With the rear...
Without reconfiguring that twenty feet by making the flares larger, I don't know how I can really restrict it right out without signs.
Yeah, you'd have to twist it, yeah.
You know? Some people listen to the signs and some don't, but...
Right, yeah.
Would the, the rear entrance still exist then?
It has to for fire protection.
For fire, yeah.
Other questions of the applicant from the board before I close the hearing here? I'm going to, any questions for staff while the hearing is still open? Are you, are you in agreement that, uh, we can, it's within our purview to adjust the width of the, allow the two-way traffic on the curb cut?
We probably want to have fire and Wayne Husband, the traffic engineer, weigh on that.
Yeah, yeah.
You can waive it however we...
We recommend you...
We'd get input first.
Yeah. Again, I'd like to just state that it's two-way currently.
Yeah, I get that. Typically, if we had that, though, like, we'd wanna see a response from the fire department and a few others. What about, um, you know, I mean, that's, we could talk about it in the meeting, but, you know, we, are, are you, as the applicant, amenable to us getting that information before making the decision?
Unfortunately, the time of year we're in, they already have a contractor lined up, and they were hoping to get going the end of the week. I mean, I know there's a, an appeal period and stuff, but...
Yeah, I mean, we may go, we may go that, we may go that way anyway on our own.
It's recorded for at least a year, so, a lot line.
Yeah, it's, it's something we may explore, just to put you on, you know?
Okay, understand.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay. All right, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, take it into the meeting, so. All right, so, um, my own thoughts here, um, you know, I'm generally in favor of the parking arrangement, I think the current parking arrangement is kind of a mess and is really not, you know, it's way too narrow in the drive aisles and, and the, we know we've had a lot of issues with angle parking in these types of developments in the past, so, you know, I, I think that the improvements in the parking is, is, is a big plus. I'm also sensitive to the neighborhood's traffic concerns, I mean, we've had, you know, a few folks, so, and they obviously have some experience with the neighborhood, as do we, so, and do understand the, the nature of broad streets. There certainly is a lot of traffic that, I'll call it, circumvents Broad Street at certain times of day, right, 'cause of the backup traffic that happens at certain times. So I get it that there are likely cars in the neighborhood trying to especially make the cross between Broad Street and Amherst, you know, that sort of area. We all in, that live in the area, kinda get that. I'm generally, am interested in exploring that second exit, but I wouldn't be comfortable weaving that without a lot of input from our own traffic engineers from the city and the fire department. But I'm very interested in what other folks' thoughts are. Mr. Peterson?
The tax map that came with the, with the report shows the Broad Street is one-way only entrance into that parking lot, and, um, the Pine Hill Avenue is bidirectional in and out. And I have a feeling that didn't happen by accident, because they don't want more traffic going in both directions on Broad Street, because that is already a very busy road. So that's why Pine Hill Avenue gets the, the brunt of the traffic. However, with this extra land being purchased with additional parking spaces, fewer of those business customers will be parking on Pine Hill Ave, 'cause they'll actually be able to find a spot in the lot. So that's just my comment.
Mr. Weber?
Um, I'm not for Broad Street either to go both directions. I think it is important that the, and it's come to us to show, they wanted that thermal painted arrow for entrance only for purpose. Traffic looked at this and said this is needed to be entrance only, and the signage too, that it's there, is gonna indicate to people, don't go back out this way. It's a dangerous thing to go back out here. I understand right turn only would be, you know, wouldn't be a hazard, but you're now adding more traffic onto Broad Street from here, and it eases it to go out. And safer now to go out onto Pine Street. It's a, the way that they're doing it, it's a safer way to come in and out, restricting, it's not a forty-foot that people can fly into there, they have to slowly... it's not a 40-foot that people can fly into there, they have to slowly go out because it's restrict, more restrictive. So I think it's, the way it's going is much better and purposefully.
Okay.
Have a question.
Mr. Peterson?
Current tax map shows the Pine Hill Ave entrance as 24 feet, so after the modification, after they buy the land, is that entrance going to be wider or is it going to be the same as it is now?
I think he indicated that, the applicant indicated they were making it narrower, that it's, it's wider, the 24 feet would be the new.
That'll be the new width, which doesn't sound wide open, cars would have to slow down to come in and out, I would think.
A 24-foot throat width is, is fairly common for that type of driveway, so that, that can certainly accommodate two-way traffic, but you, yeah, you're right, they would have to slow down to negotiate that, that turn, so.
Does anyone happen to know whether Westfield Ave is, should have asked this before, but whether that's one-way?
That's not.
Okay. What's, what's the, Ms. Harper?
Just a quick question, because I don't, I don't know the answer, obviously. If we propose a two-way entrance exit on Broad Street, could we require a, a sign that says "fire equipment only" on the back driveway?
Yeah.
To discourage people from using it?
Yeah, I'm not convinced, I'm not sure.
I'm not either, I'm just asking.
Not sure if we'd have to have the two-way on the back anymore from fire. I mean, we're, we're sort of changing the configuration, so that's kind of why I was saying.
Well, there would still be an exit, though, on the back for fire, right?
An exit, yeah, but whether we'd have to have an entrance back there for fire, I'm not sure. They, they would need to review that, right? That's what I'm thinking, but.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's why I was wondering if, and I don't know, that's a good point, in terms of the fire review, I don't know, you know, I was asking the applicant about making it just one-way circulation through the site.
Which is, yeah, and I think that's a legitimate question, too. We could look at this as just one-way in, one-way out, and then, but then fire would need to weigh in on, like you said, whether they need a.
The two-way.
A second piece of the, you know, like, still need the 24 feet and, and need part of it, sort of rope or something.
Yeah, I just would want to discourage, you know, if that was the route that we went with the two-way in and out on Broad Street, to just discourage people at that point from using that at all, in the back.
In the back?
Yeah.
Again, I, I think that we could, we certainly could get feedback from the city engineer and from the fire department.
Okay.
On those particular options if we want. You know, someone can propose to the table, you know, within our, sort of where we are for specific reason of specific feedback or comments from anyone in the city, that's a, you know, we do that routinely, that's not, not an issue. Mr. Peterson?
Well, with regard to the possible one-way discussion, the Broad Street entrance, according to the map, has got signs saying one-way only, you know, you're not allowed to exit that way.
Right.
But what would be the drawback of people entering and exiting on the Pine Hill Ave entrance? Why, why would that be better to be a one-way? Can't they enter and exit from that way?
Well, I mean, if we made it a one-way out, then, you know, there's, that does reduce the traffic on Pine Hill Ave.
Quite a bit.
Because there's only one movement.
Right, well, people coming from Amher, Amher Street are going to come in that way.
So, I mean, that, that's a legitimate, I mean, that's what it is theoretically today, right, is one-way.
To add to that argument, all the parking spaces are angled to come in one-way and park.
Currently, yeah.
But there, what I'm seeing is that they're not increasing more traffic as it, from what they're, what they're having right now, they're not increasing more, and if they made their building bigger, they added another doctors, and they added this, and they added that to their system, and now they'd have more impact, patients coming for reasons. All, all I see this happening is they're trying to make the neighborhood better because they're shortening the entrance, they're making the, more people not park on Pine Hill, they're keeping that off of there. They're not making, having more patients come to the place, they're not doing that, they're just alleviating a problem, parking problem that was there, and now they're making it so that you can exit easier, you can entrance easier, but not increasing more patients coming to the place. So I don't see the number of cars leaving increasing, I don't see that.
Well, I don't, I guess my view of this is we are, or they are making it more amenable to enter from Pine Hill. Right now, if you enter from Pine Hill, you've got parking spaces that are going the wrong way, it's a pain. You're going to make it easier to enter from Pine Hill now.
Right.
That's increasing the traffic on Pine Hill.
Well, you're, you're taking that in person. If the person was going to come on, come in off, on Broad Street, which that's where they would normal, would come through now, okay?
Right.
They're still going to come in that way, that car, that patient, that's going to be there at nine o'clock, or 10 o'clock, or 11 o'clock, that patient, it's going to come, they're going to come in Broad Street, all the, and they're going to exit Pine.
Right.
Normal thing. All they're doing is making it easy for, if a person wants to go to Pine Hill that's going to there, that's, instead of coming, that one person coming up and going in on Broad Street, they're going to come in on Pine Street.
Right.
But it's not something that it's going to change, and nobody's going to come in Broad Street anymore.
No, but I, I do think that.
What if you're on Amher Street?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you were someone coming to this site.
They're not going to come in there anyway.
As it is now, and you came in on Pine Hill because you didn't know whatever, you didn't know where you're going, you'd only do it once. You'd be like, this is a pain, I got to come in, and so you're going to go to Broad Street, right?
Yeah.
If, in this new configuration, if you come in, the first time you come in, you come in on Pine Hill, you're going to say, that was easy, I'm going to keep doing it.
Yeah.
So I, I personally think this layout increases the traffic on Pine Hill.
I agree.
I don't see that it's going to increase it, like, 10 cars.
With the two-way.
I don't see, I, I really don't see that it's going to increase it, from what it is right now, that they're going to increase, going to have 10 cars per hour instead of six cars per hour. I don't, I don't see that happening, I do. It's, it's, you're, how many people come in here on a daily basis of the traffic input? Is it three right now, an hour?
I, I.
I don't think it's going to be three an hour because of his business and the amount of parking. I think they're going to just end up, all it's making is it's easier access and getting there. I understand what you're saying.
My point is easier access means you probably use it more.
Right, but you're not, it's not a lot of traffic. If you had 15, if you're adding 15 to Pine Hill right now per hour, yeah, that's big, that's a traffic, that's a traffic study that really should be, but the amount of, that they're going to be getting in there is.
So what's, what's the drawback of making them come in on Broad Street?
It's, I think it's.
Customer confusion.
Why? I mean, you only have one entrance, yeah.
Well.
Yeah. I don't, my two cents is I, I like the idea of one-way in, one-way out.
Yeah, and I mean, in, when I asked the applicant that question, I mean, it seemed like they would be amenable to that. It's not as if they're suggesting that there's, there's some important business need where they would have to have the two-way on Pine Hill.
Yeah.
I think the only detriment to the applicant here is to the extent that we, you know, table this, and they have to wait, you know, a few more weeks to be able to start, you know, because we, we want to get, you know, further input. But it didn't sound to me like from a site plan perspective that that would be a particular concern.
Right.
If we made it, you know, one-way in Broad Street, one-way out Pine Hill, for example.
Yeah, the only thing I can see now, if you wanted to go that way, you'd table it and ask the fire department.
Right, right, so that's what I'm thinking, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would want some feedback, it's possible the fire department might want, because of the length of lot, they might want, but, you know, they also can use, they don't have to follow the arrows.
No, they don't not.
So, so they may not care, you know, you know, they can enter on, on an exit, that's not, that's not an issue, but, but I, I don't know, it seems like we kind of owe it to them when we change movements in and out of sites, we typically want feedback from the fire department.
Yeah, and from the traffic engineer, too, I think.
Right, yeah. Mr. Peterson?
And with the address being on Broad Street, somebody tested GPS, they're going to come to the, what we consider to be the preferred entrance.
Right.
And then once they learn, you enter here and you exit in the back, then, then they're trained.
Done.
So one-way would probably work. And with the bigger parking lot, more asphalt, you fit more cars in the lot rather than out on Pine Avenue.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a benefit. I mean, I do think that the current parking configuration is not great, and it actually exacerbates issues with cars on Pine Hill, you know? So I'm kind of in favor of that. I mean, I, I think the parking upgrade is definitely desirable and wanted, you know, it's just the, the in and out movements, I think are, I think it's a legitimate concern about any increase on Pine Hill, just because of the nature of the cut-through traffic anyway in that area, it's on that triangle, you know, that's just everybody's, both those streets get backed up and.
I'm going to throw something out there, and, one of the, yes, yes. Is it out, out, going crazy to say a crosswalk across there because a lot of the kids are using that, just to let people know that, would it hurt to have a cross? I know it's, it's not a sidewalk there, I don't think there's a sidewalk, they talked about it, I didn't see if there was a sidewalk there, but.
I think, I think you can't do a crosswalk to nowhere, I think there has to be some, some level of connectivity.
I'm just, I'm just saying there was a lot of kids using it and just.
But it, it would draw, it would almost become an attractive nuisance, you put a crosswalk there, but there's no sidewalk on either side, so it's not, it's inherently not a safe place to, to cross. I think it's, there's ADA implications there as well.
Okay, yeah, I just want to throw that out there, because I thought the same thing, but one of the, the neighbors were saying that the kids are using that a great deal, and they're concerned that people, no matter if they're coming in or going, leaving, there's still that potential for.
Right, but if we, yeah, we wouldn't typically do that.
Okay.
Anybody want to, I mean, I don't know if we want to keep discussing, it seems like there's some, I mean, I'm just looking around, is there general agreement that we want some more feedback from the fire department on the, a single movement? I don't know, Mr. Bollinger, you?
I don't want to put words into Mr. Chadwick's mouth, so to speak, but it seemed like he didn't, you know, adamantly oppose the idea if, if we revisited this. My honest opinion from a, overall traffic perspective, I think it's a low-intensity generator, it's a medical office building, it's open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, or 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, whatever the hours are, you have some staff arriving there early, they're probably gone shortly thereafter, so it's, it's not a 7-Eleven, it's not some higher-intensity commercial use. That being said, I, I do appreciate the feedback from, from the neighbors, if there is a way to reinvestigate or at least pose some questions to, to staff, both fire and engineering regarding, you know, in essence, could they support the one-way flow? I wouldn't have any issues with tabling the matter and pursuing that.
Okay.
I'm on side with it.
Anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
I would make a motion, and I'll, I guess I'll, I'll do them separately.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table new business number three subdivision plan for the exclusive purpose of obtaining additional feedback from the traffic engine, city traffic engineer and the, the fire department with respect to a proposal for a one-way traffic movement on the site in Broad Street out Pine Hill Avenue.
So we have a motion to ta, or do you want to table it to a?
Sorry, yes, I should table to dates, table to our November 7th meeting, please.
Okay, so we have a motion to table new business number three to, what was it, November 7th, for the specific feedback from city fire and, and engineering, as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. We should address number eight.
Yeah, so then I would, I would make a corollary motion to table new business number eight site plan, also to our November 7th meeting, and again, for the, for the very same purpose in terms of having the city traffic engineer and fire department evaluate the one-way traffic movement on the site.
Okay, so we have that motion to table, as indicated by Mr. Varley, for new business number eight. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay, thanks. So staff, you, you're going to pass that on to fire and to city, so we can get a quick feedback on that, yeah? So folks, I, I just ask if you want to have further discussions, make sure you just take it outside so we can move on to the next, appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to move on to new business case number four, that is a subdivision plan at Stone Properties, Inc., in State of New Hampshire, D E S, application and acceptance of proposed lot-line relocation. This property is located at 65 and L. Gilson Road. I'm going to hear that in conjunction with new business site plan case number nine for Etchstone Properties for the, the same location. We have, or has anybody on the board had a chance to review first new business case number four and want to make a motion as way, ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction from Mr. Weber. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bollinger. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. Regarding site plan case number nine, have a motion as to whether that's ready to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
Another motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction, second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay, and you can go ahead, like we've done before, go right through the, both the subdivision and the site plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Here before you this evening, representing Etchstone Properties, and joining me in the audience tonight is Mr. Kevin Slattery, the president of Etchstone Properties. As you mentioned, we have two plans before you. The first plan on the, the left board is the lot-line relocation plan, and then the, the plan up on the right is a site plan amendment. I'll quickly run through the lot-line relocation plan, move on to the site plan, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions. The two lots we're dealing with on lot-line relocation plan are lots 32 and 460 on map D. Lot 32 is the current Thompson's Preserve residential site, which, that's the, the lower lot on the plan, and lot 460 is the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services environmental site, which is the top one on the plan, and if, if you've never seen that, that's a kind of a raw land site that just has a, a whole bunch of monitoring wells on it, it's an environmental site from back in the 80s that. It's a environmental site from back in the eighties, um, that the state of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services took over and, and they monitor that. So, quickly, why, why we're here for the lot line is, um, back in the nineteen eighties, when, uh, New Hampshire was putting in all these monitoring wells, uh, on, on the northern site, they inadvertently installed, uh, three monitoring wells on, on the, on the Thompson's lot, which, which was back then was owned by the Thompson family. Um, and so, so if I call your attention to the, the blue triangle on the, on the left, uh, plan, uh, that's the area that we would be relocating from the Thompson's Preserve plan to the New Hampshire plan. And it's in that area where those three monitoring wells are. Um, that area is, is merely point two one three acres in size, a little over nine thousand square feet. Whereas, the, the Thompson's Preserve, uh, plan is, um, is a little over thirteen acres in size. So, we're talking a very small fraction of, of the Thompson plan. Um, the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services, they actually, um, approached Mr. Slattery and requested that he go ahead and do this because they'd like to get those monitoring wells off his property and onto theirs. So, then to, um, to follow that up, moving to the site plan on the, the right-hand side of the board. Um, what this is, is the first sheet of the Thompson's Preserve residential site plan, uh, which was approved, uh, I believe last September, um, by this board. And simply, all this plan does is it just amends the boundary on, on the site plan. Since if the lot line relocation plan is approved, that just alters the, the boundary, uh, like I said, by, by point two one three acres. So, we're just updating the site plan to reflect what would be the current boundary. Um, there's no proposed changes to the site plan. There's no additional units, nothing of that nature. The lot line relocation plan, the change in the boundary doesn't affect the, the density or, or anything of that nature. It's really just a housekeeping item, just to make sure that the site plan would reflect the current boundary if the lot line relocation plan is approved. Uh, we are requesting two waivers, um, one with each plan. Uh, the first one on the lot line relocation plan is from section one ninety dash two eighty-one D ten and one ninety dash two eighty-one D one four. And this is with regards to showing specific existing conditions on and adjacent to the site, including topography. And with the site plan, we are requesting a waiver of section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE. And that requires showing the existing conditions of the site, including topography. Reason for both waivers is that these are really simple plans and to go ahead and do that excess work would, uh, would be a financial hardship for Etchstone Properties. Um, if this plan is approved, um, that would allow the New Hampshire Department of Justice to move forward with, to take the lot line relocation plan and move that forward to the governor's council. Because any type of land gift that is going to go to the state of New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Governor's Council has to approve it. And part of the way they do things, they, they need an approved plan before they will act on, on accepting a gift from Etchstone Properties. So, so that's why we, we weren't able to actually get a signature, uh, on the lot line relocation plan or on the lot line relocation planning board application. And I believe that's, that's mentioned in the, in the stipulations of approval.
Okay.
Um, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I, I'm wondering, uh, this was one, maybe from my own information, this couldn't be done like an easement, you know? Or was there a reason why it wouldn't wanna be an easement versus?
Uh, I, I, I believe it's just because the, the, uh, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services actually wanted to own the monitoring wells. I mean, it is something that could, could have been done with an easement, but, but they wanted them under their ownership control. So, so really, the way to do that is to transfer the tract.
Okay, yeah. Alright, that was really my only question. Anybody else have a question? Mr. Peterson?
A pointed clarification. On the staff report, the subdivision plan for new business number four, when they talk about the old lot sizes and the new lot sizes, it looks like, you know, you're giving over approximately ninety-three hundred square feet to, um, you know, map four sixty. But right above it, there's another sentence that, that they're saying is thirty-three hundred square feet, you know, three thousand three hundred eighteen. Am I reading this wrong or that three thousand three hundred eighteen is not the correct number? It should be, be more like ninety-three hundred.
I think that might be a duplicate value, Mr. Chair, from an earlier application that...
Yeah, just a typo.
Yeah, change that to...
So, it should be like ninety-three hundred, right?
Got it. Any further questions for the applicant? Mr. Weber?
The completion time, when do you figure completion? I see half of it, looks like half of it is done, or?
The, the, for, for governor's council to...
No, no, for the, the rest of the, are all of these buildings?
Oh, in terms of when the, the, all the buildings will be, will fini, be finished?
Yes.
Um, I, I'd, I'd prefer to let Mrs. Slattery answer that.
Please.
Either that or you can get the information and bring it up, either one or the other. Yeah, okay. Yeah, just, you'd state your name and address for the record, thanks.
Kevin Slattery, president of Etchstone Properties, with an office of one seventy-nine Amherst Street. Uh, we opened up the sales model, uh, mid to end of July, and we have ten homes under agreement, actively showing, uh, the property. Market-driven, of course, seasonally market-driven. Uh, I would hope that we would have the project delivered out by the end of next year.
Okay, the reason I'm asking, there has been property in the, not you, not Slattery doing it. I mean, other projects that started and never completed and they're still not even, they're just open space, that part of the homeowners are there and there's only a few, and so it's not really full. So, I know it's market, it happens by the market, but it's, it's good to get it done.
Well, that's, that's our objective. You, I can assure you of that. And I, and I'm familiar with that, those situations.
Thank you.
They happen primarily when the market was, was very stressed. Doesn't happen quite as much now, but nevertheless, I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Alright, thanks. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned, have a question with the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Alright, hearing none. I'll ask the board, any further questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the hearing, uh, on both of these items and move to the meeting. So, um, pretty straightforward. You know, it seems pretty usual to me that the state's just looking to have control of the monitoring wells and the land under them, so. I don't have any issues on my end. Uh, anybody else have any discussion points they wanna make? Anybody willing to make a motion? And I remind you, you have two motions, uh, new business number four and number nine. Take number four first. Anyone on the board here?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, Mr. Weber?
Cause he doesn't do them all. New business number four subdivision, uh, Etchstone Properties, uh, located at sixty-five and L. Gibson Road. Finding the, um, plan meets NRO one thirty-eight G with six stipulations as written.
Address the waiver, just the number one?
Oh.
Thanks.
Stipulation number one.
Oh, yeah, sorry, thank you. Request for waiver, uh, one ninety-two, two thousand eight hundred twenty-one D ten and fourteen, which requires, uh, to show certain existing conditions is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and content of the regulations two through six as written. Sorry about that.
No problem. Alright, so we have a motion to approve new business number four, um, with the six stipulations and the, the approval of the waiver. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. Ed, do you wanna address, uh, number nine?
Yes. Uh, new business number nine, site plan, Etchstone Properties, uh, sixty-five and L. Gibson. Uh, finding the, the plan meets NRO one ninety, one forty-six D. First stipulation, request for waiver, NRO one ninety-two seventy-nine EE showing existing conditions on adage, uh, addition, adjacent properties is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, two through four as written.
Okay, and I just, just for clarity or record, um, the, the location, Gilson Road, right?
Gilson, thank you.
Okay, accurate. Alright, so we have a, uh, we have a motion to approve new business number nine, as stated by, uh, Mr. Weber. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay. Alright, next up, I'm gonna hear, um, new business subdivision plan, uh, case number five. Northland Legacy and Trust LLC owner, application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation. Property is at one thirty-three and one thirty-five Amherst Street. Anybody from the board had a chance to review new business number five? Wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Some of them.
Uh, we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. Alright.
Good eve, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Geida, and I'm with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Uh, place of business is two oh six Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. Uh, and we're representing this plan, um, tonight for a lot line adjustment. There's no proposal for any change in any of the buildings, um, drives, uses. Um, it's simply a lot line adjustment, um, which is conforming to all the regulations. Um, it actually makes some of these setbacks a little bit more, uh, conforming to the existing buildings. Um, it's more of a, um, try to get, try to get rid of some of the irregular, uh, shaped lot lines on two existing lots. Um, and again, they both, um, will meet, uh, current regulations as far as zoning, um, and setbacks.
Okay, so we also, excuse me, can you just explain the nature of the two lots and the specifically what pieces are going where, just for...
Sure, yep.
Yeah, you can just bring the mic up, it'd be helpful.
Yeah, it's a little far away. Um, so this area right here in purple, um, is basically the area that's being transferred. It's approximately four thousand seven hundred and forty-three square feet, is going to lot sixty dash sixty-five. And the orange line here is the new proposed lot line. So, this, uh, purple going to this lot.
And right now, that purple is in the orange lot.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Makes real sense.
Alright, uh, I didn't notice, were there any, you know, waivers were, at all?
Uh, there...
Any questions?
Was one waiver, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, there was one.
I'm sorry, it's on the front, yeah. Can you just state that for the record?
Yeah, um, the waiver for the requirement for, um, to show existing features within a thousand feet, um, for this purpose, um, there's really no benefit, um, to, to basically show that. Uh, we do show all the abutting, uh, features within fifty feet. Um, it would just be a hardship, um, and not really provide any additional information, so we would like that waiver.
Okay. Questions for the applicant from staff or from the board?
I just have one question.
Yeah, Mr. Varley?
Are, are these two lots under the same ownership or?
Yes.
They are.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Uh, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned, have questions with the plan? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, hearing none. Uh, any further questions of the applicant from the, from the board or from the staff? Okay, alright, at this point, I'll close the hearing, uh, move to the meeting. So, pretty simple, um, lot line relocation here, makes sense to me. It looks like it gives more usable property on sort of both lots, frankly.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't have any issues on my end. Anybody have any issues they wanna discuss in the meeting here?
I'm just, I like the thing because the other lot line was right up against that shed, which is...
Yeah.
You know, it's, and the pool house, so this makes a lot more sense.
Anybody willing to make a motion?
I, I just, I just wanna ask one question of staff. The, the staff report said the plan was reviewed by city staff, engineering comments are pending. Was there anything in the interim indicating, maybe I, I saw it, maybe it's...
In your, uh, folder this evening, um, you got updated comments from engineering, um, dated October fifteenth.
Is there anything that we should do for adding that to?
You could change stipulation number three to say prior to the chair signing the plan, um, engineering comments from Joe Mendole dated October fifteenth shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department.
Alright. Any further discussion? Okay. Uh, was someone was gonna make a motion, I think? Varley?
I, I will make one.
Okay.
So, I would make a motion to approve new business number five subdivision, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, uh, with a total of four stipulations. The first being a wave request of the existing conditions, uh, planned requirement, and that should read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Uh, stipulation number two to be revised to read prior to the chair signing the plan. Uh, all comments from Joe Mendole in an email dated October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department. And, uh, stipulations number three and four is written in the staff report.
Okay, um, so we have the, that motion to approve with the stipulations as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Weber. Uh, any further discussion? Just to clarify, we, was it stipulation three that you were amending?
Yes.
I think you might have said three and four the same, but I think you amended three and four stayed the same. I just, just did a audio record, right? It was three, it was one and two that you, uh...
I think he amended two, Mr. Chair, and I think the intent of staff was to amend three.
You amended three.
I amended two, but let's see.
I think you meant three.
Yeah, you're right. So, I'll just, I'll correct my motion, indicate that my change was to stipulation number three.
Got it.
Should've been to stipulation three, not two.
Got it.
Two should remain, it's written in the staff report.
So, that clarification, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay, thanks. Okay, moving on. I'm now gonna take, uh, new business subdivision plan, case number six, Mary Jane Conway King. Um, this is, this is an application and acceptance of proposed two-lot subdivision. Property is located at sixty-seven Berkeley Street. Has anybody from the board had a chance to review this application and wanna make a motion as to whether to take jurisdiction? Mr. Weber? Is, was that to take jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction, Mr. Weber, uh, for new business number six. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Okay, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hainer Swanson, and our office is located at three Congress Street here in Nashua. I'm here this evening representing, uh, Mr. Curtis King and Mrs. Mary Jane Conway King. They are with me in the audience tonight. We've come before you seeking approval for a one into two lot subdivision of the tract at sixty-seven Berkeley Street. Quickly, some information about that lot. Uh, it is lot sixty-three, map forty-eight, and as you can see with the, the plan on the left part of the board, um, it's a double frontage lot. So, the existing house, uh, faces Berkeley Street, hence the, the Berkeley Street address, and then it also has frontage on Swart. The new lot that we would be creating will, uh, will front, um, strictly on Swart. Uh, the total tract is one point two six one acres in size. The Berkeley Street lot would, um, be point six oh two six acres, and the Swart lot would be point six five eight four acres. It's zoned RA, urban residence. Uh, the new lot would be serviced by municipal sewer, Pennachuck water, gas, and underground electric and telephone utilities. Uh, the tract is abutted by residential homes on all sides. There are existing sidewalks that run along our frontage on both, uh, Berkeley and Swart, um, so there's, there'll be no need for, uh, a contribution or a construction of sidewalks. If you look at the plan on the right, as you can see, the, the home we're proposing is a custom home. Um, the, the, uh, the Kings will be, uh, moving from the sixty-seven Berkeley Street lot into this new home, so this is something that they're proposing. So, it's not, uh, a subdivision where we're cutting one into two and then flipping to a potential home builder, so this is, this is what they've proposed. They've worked with, uh, an architect on this for some time, and, uh, that's the footprint they provided with us. Uh, the, the driveway access, we've designed it, um, so rounded a little bit. The, the intent of it is to be kind of, uh, one way in, one way out, so it would, it would be in kind of on the, the left-hand side of the plan and exit on, on the right-hand side of the plan. If you had a chance to drive by the lot, there's some very large trees on that lot, uh, that the Kings would like to save, so, uh, we, we targeted those trees and kind of situated the home in line to, to preserve a number of those trees, to kind of maintain those on the lot. Stormwater, uh, we are handling stormwater through a series of yard drains, uh, that will lead to a couple of leach and catch basins and an underground infiltration trench, uh, that's located on the, uh, along the eastern property line, kind of on, on the lower end of the property. Our stormwater design meets all the requirements of the National Land Use Code with regards to stormwater treatment. Uh, the engineering, uh, technical review comments, um, we have, uh, we received those last week, uh, we addressed them all and turned those around, uh, today, actually. So, we, we submitted those to Joe Mendola in the engineering department, and we also, um, submitted those along with a copy of our, our letter. We submitted those, uh, to the planning department today, so they are aware of how we've addressed all the engineering comments. Uh, we believe the site's being developed in a responsible manner in accordance with the National Land Use Code. The recommended conditions of approval are acceptable to my client. I would note, though, uh, stipulation number three with regards to, uh, getting an address for the proposed lot, uh, the fire department did give us, uh, an address numbers, number nine, so, and we have made that change on the plan, so, um, uh, you, you could strike that stipulation if you, if you're so moved to. Uh, at this time, we respectfully seek your approval, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Where the, um, the current walkway along the road, is, is that's a concrete?
Yes.
The detail where the driveway crosses the walk, what's, is it intended to be asphalt all the way through? Is, is there, is there, is there gonna be a concrete strip across the driveway, or?
Um, we're, we're, uh, we're, we're proposing to substandard asphalt driveway.
Alright, and then you sort of tip down the walks?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, on, on, on both sides, on both driveway.
Okay.
And so, we'd, we'd tip down the existing sidewalk, so that it would, you know, meet, meet the ADA requirements and, and mesh with the proposed driveway cuts.
Okay. Alright. Other questions for the applicant, Mr. Peterson?
So, will the final address be nine Swart Terrace, not nine Swart Street?
Uh, this is street or, or, whether it's street or terrace is, is still being worked out, but it's going, in, in either case, it's going to be nine.
Nine Swart something.
Correct, yes.
Other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Uh, just make sure you state your, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Dan Richardson. I live at seventy Berkeley Street, which is just a corner from this property.
Okay.
Uh, I want to compliment my neighbors on taking consideration of their neighbors. I took a look at the plan, and it's pretty clear that they're making sure that they won't be flooding out their neighbors by putting in those, uh, drainage systems to, uh, make sure that it doesn't flood down there, uh, at the Horne's place. I did take a look at the deeds, um, for the properties. It was originally, the place, the property that they have now, which is the existing property, was consolidation of four different lots. And there was a deed restriction on the lots facing, uh, Swart Street or Swart Terrace, um, and I was just wondering if the, if those prior restrictions, those, those, uh, uh, I think there's another name for it, um, if those are still in force, uh, if the, I wonder if the, uh, engineer has taken a look at that, because the restriction is that, um, the property facing Swart Street, uh, no building could be built within forty feet of, uh, Swart Terrace Sweet Street, I guess. So, I just don't know if those are still in force or not.
Okay.
Uh, I took a look at the drawing, I kind of thumbedballed it, uh, to see if, you know, what the distance was. It looks like it's maybe thirty-five feet from the, from the line? I don't know. So, I just kind of throwing that out there, I wasn't sure if they were still in force.
Okay, well, we can, uh, we can, I don't know, we can talk with staff, and we can talk with the engineer and see, we'll, we'll ask them.
Okay.
Alright, thanks. Okay. Uh, anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the plan? No? So, at this time, maybe the applicant, Steve, did, could you address, I mean, it, I'm not sure if, was, was there any previous deed restrictions that anybody was aware of or anything, uh?
Well, I mean, when, when, anytime we do any, any boundary survey, um, you know, our, our licensed land surveyors do a thorough review of all, you know, all prior deeds and any, if there's anything with any type of building restriction, you know, that's, that's still valid if it's carried through the, the chain of title, you know, we, we certainly have to honor that.
Yep.
So, I'm, I, I personally am, am unaware of anything like that. We would've brought that to, uh, to the Kings' attention, you know, to say, well, you certainly, you know, you know, can't build within, you know, X amount of feet or, or whatnot. Uh, so, I, I don't believe we're in, in any violation of, of any deed restriction.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're in, I'm not sure that's a planning board thing again?
No, that's actually something that-
Yeah.
-planning department would just go by what the zoning, um, setbacks are. If there's private covenants or deed restrictions like that, we would not be aware of them.
Okay. Alright.
I mean, and we, I mean, just to, as a point, I mean, even, even if we, you know, tomorrow found that, that that was to be correct, I mean, we could, we could still take that house and relocate it, you know, however many feet or whatnot, I mean, just the, we're, we're allowed to put the house anywhere inside the, the building setbacks. Um, you know, that's just the situ- the location that we chose, um, you know, so it's not that's, that exact location by no means is, is set in stone.
Right.
So, if there was something that we, you know, missed for whatever reason, you know, we could certainly, uh, you know, make that change on the plan, and it has no bearing on, on the integrity of the plan. I mean, the whole, the whole purpose of doing this is so that we can prove to the engineering department that whatever lot we're creating can, can support a house, and we show, you know, how we, you know, provide the utilities to the street and, and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah, we understand it's a subdivision plan, really, it's, it's not a subdivision. Okay, alright, alright, any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Alright, hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing and move into the meeting. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any further discussion items?
Very, very, very minor one, Mr. Chair. Would you, I, I might recommend keeping, um, staff recommendation number three regarding the address. It seemed like there was some discussion about whether it's street or terrace, um, the number notwithstanding, um, we'd, we'd still need to know what the proper nomenclature of the road is, so.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts, uh, it's not any kind of burden on anybody, so, I don't think so. I agree. Anybody else? No? Okay. Anybody want to make them?
Oh, we did get engineering, updated engineering comments, so you might want to change stipulation number one, um, to, you know, engineering comments from Joe Mendola dated October eleventh.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, it looks like, so the applicant, so these are updated from the original?
Correct.
Yeah, I think these are the ones that Stephen indicated they had responded to.
Yeah, so there's a response to them, but Joe hasn't reviewed the responses.
No, they just, we just got them today.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll just leave that in there, okay. Alright, anybody willing to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Weber?
Um, new business number six subdivision plan, owner Mary Jane Con- uh, Conway King, uh, Revocable Trust, uh, Mary Jane Conway King trustee, two lot subdivision, sixty-seven Berkeley Street, finding the plan meets NRO one ninety, one thirty-eight G. Changing the stipulation one, uh, prior to the chair signing the plan, uh, engineering plan dated October eleventh, twenty nineteen will be addressed, um, to the satisfaction of the engineering department, and two through six as written.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve all of the stipulations as indicated by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that?
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thanks. Okay. Alright, um-
Let's take a five-minute break.
What's that?
Take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and take a five-minute break, um, just to folks in the audience, if, if you're here for case number eleven or twelve for comments, could you raise your hand? Is anybody here for that, or is everybody here for case number ten? Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna, just for everyone's own purpose, I'm gonna hear eleven and twelve first, 'cause they're gonna be a, a quick thing, and I want to make sure I have full time for ten, for ten, so. Okay. So, who's here for, as an applicant for number eleven? Yeah, so, set up, yes.
Is that okay?
Lynn might need more time, she's still talking. She hasn't gone to the bathroom yet.
We're waiting for a couple folks here.
Yeah. No, I know, no, I'm saying, she hasn't gone to the bathroom. And she asked for it, and she still hasn't.
Scott's here, we're all good, we're good.
Little shit.
I'm just waiting on one more on board.
Yeah, no problem.
Usually I get bumped the other way, so I'm happiest.
You owe me.
Which one are we listing now?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
There's one I missed, let's see. Who, yeah. There's a second on one of them.
Yeah, I don't know if I got that either, so.
I was just gonna ask Ed.
That is true.
Okay, um, so, we're now gonna hear, uh, new business site plan, case number eleven, YMCA of Greater Nashua, application and acceptance of proposed amendment to N R twenty-one seventy-eight. Um, this is, the property is located ninety Northwest Boulevard, um, can have a motion as to whether this application is ready to take jurisdiction by the board?
So moved.
So, a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hainer Swanson, three Congress Street here in Nashua. Uh, here tonight, uh, representing the YMCA on their property located at ninety Northwest Boulevard. Um, the YMCA's, uh, facilities manager, Sean Nolan, is also with me here tonight, if there's any questions, uh, specifically related to their use or operations that I can't answer. We're seeking an amendment to a site plan that was approved earlier this year, uh, for a proposed aquatic center. Um, I'll be very brief in my presentation, I know it was rather lengthy- Um, I'll be very brief in my presentation, I know it was rather lengthy last time, uh, I know there's some folks in the, in the crowd, um, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if there's anything that's, that's missing. Um, so we're ninety Northwest Boulevard, uh, it's within the Westwood Industrial Park in the northwest part of the city, Zone Park Industrial, uh, we're abutted by the railroad to the north and a, a mix of industrial and commercial uses throughout the park. Uh, access to the site is currently off of a shared driveway, uh, with Auto Jean onto Northwest Boulevard. Um, the real quick, uh, detailed history of the site, this subject site was part of an original Corning Lasertron project back in the early two thousands, the fifty-five acre parcel, it was a five hundred and fifty thousand square foot manufacturing building and over twelve hundred parking spaces. The project was only partially constructed, uh, a number of utility and stormwater infrastructure was constructed in place, including the subject, uh, stormwater basin located on our site. The excess land was then subdivided, uh, to create the subject site, the Auto Jean parcel and the Bellevance parcel, um, within the park. In twenty thirteen, we were before this board for a fifty-five thousand square foot building, which was constructed on the subject parcel along with fifty-one parking spaces. Uh, we then came back asking to convert the building from an industrial use to the Nashua Sports Academy, which operated there for about, uh, five or six years, uh, typical indoor sports facility, basketball courts, turf fields. Um, in February of twenty nineteen, we were granted a site plan approval, uh, for the YMCA to build a, an aquatic center on the property, to include an outdoor pool, splash pad, a clubhouse building along with other associated, uh, site improvements. Uh, construction has not, uh, began, um, they did occupy, uh, the building shortly after that approval and, and have been doing very well out there. Uh, it's considered the Westwood Park branch of the Nashua YMCA, which also includes the facility by Stelo Stadium and, and also the Merrimack Branch up off of DW Highway. Um, the, the pad itself, uh, is still the same, uh, is still the same area, it's about twenty-four thousand square foot as shown on the plan, again, outdoor pool, splash pad, water slide, really for instructional and recreational swimming, uh, we made some small tweaks to the clubhouse building and actually was downsized a little bit, we removed the previously shown playground, we really just, uh, this summer got into kind of the final details of how that aquatic center pad, uh, was going to look. Um, hours of operation Monday through Sunday, eight AM to dusk seasonally. So the changes we're, we're looking to make, we, we wanted to rotate the aquatic center pad essentially ninety degrees, and what that did was, based on our previous parking layout, it, it, it ate into our parking in our driveway and really made for a non-functional site. Um, so we're back before you with a couple changes, uh, in terms of the site design. Um, the parking layout has grown, we were previously proposing a hundred and forty-three parking spaces, we're now up to two hundred, really maxing out parking in and around that aquatic center pad, as you can see, we've really added a, a second bay of parking, and we're, we also contemplated in, in our proposing a new site driveway out to Northwest Boulevard, which I think is gonna help take the pressure off of that existing shared driveway with, with, uh, our neighbors Auto Jean. Um, so in total, we'll have, with the existing spaces, uh, two hundred and fifty-one parking spaces on site. Uh, in addition to the curb cut and additional parking, we did make some changes to the stormwater. As I mentioned, back in the two thousand project, there was a big C-shaped stormwater basin that was constructed to accommodate our drainage as well as a portion of the Auto Jean site. We worked with them last February to approve kind of the shared continued use of that, and now we're back before you, basically filling in a portion of the basin that existed along Northwest Boulevard, and to accommodate that, we're growing the basin along the north westerly side, pushing that slope a little bit closer to our butter, uh, to the west. Um, we've submitted revised plans to the, uh, city, uh, Pennachuck also reviewed this because we're within the watershed, and of course, we're back up at AOT getting our, uh, a permit revised that we pulled earlier this year. Um, so I talked about, uh, stormwater, uh, parking, again, uh, two hundred and fifty-one spaces as proposed here, the YMCA also has a lease for fifty-three spaces with Auto Jean that is due to expire in a couple of years, and I think they wanted to make sure they had the resources here on their site. Um, I think Auto Jean has indicated they're interested in continuing to share spaces, but, um, that parking space amount is well in line with what they're seeing at their Merrimack and Nashua facilities. Um, we did have one waiver request, uh, my letter dated October ninth, I'll just paraphrase that, uh, we're seeking a waiver of section one ninety, one eighty-four D one, which is related to interior landscaping within the parking area, that's really asking us to create, um, an interior island or median, um, if we're over ten spaces in a row. Um, we've got twenty to twenty-two spaces on a couple of those interior bays there. Um, so the goal of the project was obviously to maximize parking as best we can on site while also creating some good landscape buffers both along our site frontage and, and along the, uh, the shared driveway with Auto Jean. Um, as you can see, we're proposing a significant number of plantings there, we're really gonna have a healthy buffer both along those frontages and, and between the parking area and the, the aquatic center itself. Um, so, uh, we're not really seeing the additional benefit to add, uh, you know, of, of landscape, additional landscape islands within this parking area, we would of course lose space, it would result in a less efficient parking layout, and then would create additional maintenance, drainage and plowing issues, um, you know, as the YMCA seeks to maintain the site, so... Um, so we believe we have a site plan that is complete and conforms with the regulation. Um, the conditions outlined in the report, uh, are acceptable. I do wanna note that stipulation number three related to engineering comments from, uh, Peter Kohame, we did receive an updated letter from, uh, Mr. Kohame yesterday, um, saying that all our previous concern had, had been addressed, so I believe staff is in receipt of that, so if you're comfortable with removing that stipulation, there are no real, uh, outstanding comments from, from engineering. Thank you.
All right, um, just comment on the, uh, the, what we have in our packet?
Yes.
That's the latest, so that's good to go, so, so three you think is unnecessary as well?
Correct.
Good. Uh, any questions of the applicant from the board? Mr. Barley?
I just had a question, in terms of the, the landscape medians in the parking, how, do you know, I mean, how many parking spaces would you lose if you conform with that requirement?
I believe it would be four or five.
So it's not, I mean, it's not a significant number of spaces then?
It's not, my, my testimony is that I'm not really seeing, because it's really only just for those one, one bays, the interior bays, um, I, I feel like we're, we've got s- a significant amount of plantings on the outside of the site, you know, buffering that parking area, we've got significant plantings in and around the aquatic center and, um, just not really seeing that added benefit there. Um, adding more islands inside, you know, creates plowing and, and drainage issues, so I, I think the intent of the overall regulation is to, to provide, you know, su- sufficient landscaping in and around parking areas to provide screening and buffering, so, um, that's why we're asking for that waiver.
Okay. Other questions on the applicant? Barley, any, any other follow-on from that, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not this time.
All right, um, questions for staff? All right, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none, any further questions from the board? For the applicant or staff? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, so, uh, yeah, so this is a, just an amendment to our previous plan we've seen before, um, you know, changes a little bit of the parking and the, uh, sort of the site drainage, uh, anybody have any discussion items or questions they wanna talk about in the meeting here? Mr. Barley, are you comfortable with, uh, median?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know it's, it's an issue that's come up before and we've talked about in the context of other plans where...
Right.
I know, um, you know, since Zajak was talking about, you know, with the buffering being the primary purpose, and we talked about, you know, landscape medians also have the, sort of the impact and intent of breaking up...
Yeah.
Sort of large areas of, of pavement, but, um, at the same time, I know, you know, other plans, we've looked at sort of similar circumstances where...
Yeah.
The applicant, you know, has provided landscaping in, in other parts of the site plan...
Right.
That, you know, we think help make up for that, so I mean, I do think there is a lot of open asphalt here, um, but I appreciate that the, that the applicant is, is trying to provide sort of alternative landscaping spaces to assist with that, and I, and I think, again, sort of from a, from a, you know, sort of reasonablest perspect, fairest perspective, given what we've done in other contexts, I think we've ma- granted this waiver in similar circumstances, so I, I think I can, I can, you know, be comfortable granting the waiver here, um, you know, given the, you know, the other landscape that they're providing and given what we've done in other, other plans, so...
Okay. Other comments? Anybody willing to make a motion?
You liked it.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Um, with regard to new business number eleven site plan, Land M. Management Company, YMCA of Greater Nashua, it conforms with NRO one ninety, one forty-six D. Stipulation number one, request for a waiver of one ninety, one eighty-four D one, which requires a landscape median for every ten interior spaces is granted and shall, and finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And stipulation number two, as written in the staff report.
And are you removing stipulation number three?
Stipulation number three will be removed, uh, from what's written in the staff report.
All right, so we have that motion to approve with the, uh, stipulations as indicated by Mr. Peterson, do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Barley? Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None? That motion passes. Thanks. Okay, I'm now gonna hear, uh, case number twelve, um, new business site plan, nineteen eighty-seven Tamposi Limited Partnership Owner, application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR twenty-fourteen, uh, this property is fifty-seven Northeastern Boulevard. If anybody had a chance to review, uh, new business number twelve site plan and wanna make a motion as to whether this, uh, application is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
So a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Ballinger, we have a second, second by Mr. Peterson, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. All right, here we go.
Uh, good evening, again, Mr. Chair, for the record, my name is Tom Zajak, civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, Three Congress Street, here in Nashua, uh, representing the Tamposi Company, the property located at fifty-seven Northeastern Boulevard. Um, we're seeking an amendment to a site plan that was approved by the planning board in December of twenty eighteen and is currently under construction. Uh, the location of the parcel, two point two acres, located along Northeastern Boulevard, the property is Zone PI Park Industrial, the lot is directly abutted by commercial buildings on three sides, so the Harmer Homes Building to the north, Best Fitness, Boston Billiards are the main tenants in the building to the east, fifty-five Northeastern, that sits in the back of the site, uh, we've got the FAA campus to our south, and of course, Northeastern Boulevard along our westerly, uh, edge, and there are some office condominiums located across northeast, uh, Northeastern Boulevard. At the last planning board meeting, um, there was a detailed presentation given in the history of the site, uh, this specific site was permitted for a twenty-eight thousand square foot two-story office building back in two thousand and two, uh, with ninety-six parking spaces, uh, the site work and foundation were completed in two thousand and three, and, and as many of you are familiar with, the foundation sit, that sat there for a number of years. Uh, in twenty eighteen, the property was approved, uh, by the zoning board to allow a bank in twenty-five percent of the building, uh, as it relates to the, the PI zone, um, and then we were back, uh, before the board in December of twenty eighteen, uh, and were granted approval for a, a drive-through bank and minor site improvements, again, building off of that original two thousand and two approval. Uh, the building and the site improvements are nearing completion, uh, if you've been out there. So what we're proposing here tonight is to amend the current site plan to essentially add a curb cut onto Northeastern Boulevard. Uh, the reason for this request, uh, is, is, uh, for a couple different reasons. Uh, first, the property owners, uh, when they were going through this approval back in December, they were very much focused on the bank and the drive-through aspect, that was kinda what was driving this, uh, driving that use and driving that construction, um, but had received input from a number of interested, uh, parties in the remainder of the building, uh, that felt that, uh, the entrance as it exists out there or would exist under the current plan, uh, was a little confusing in terms of access for them, um, and using the fifty-five Northeastern, uh, Boulevard entrance to the south, uh, was combining that use with a number of fairly intense users, specifically Best Fitness and Boston Billiards, and having an independent entrance for the site, uh, is preferable, uh, both to the property owner and to the bank tenant. Uh, therefore, we're showing a two-lane, twenty-four-foot-wide curb cut near the front entrance, uh, to the new building, uh, is a fairly straightforward change from an engineering perspective, uh, the grades are relatively flat in that area, there's good sightlines along this stretch of Northeastern Boulevard. Um, so in terms of the plan itself, um, we're providing eighty-six spaces on this amended plan, um, compared with the plan in, in, uh, December, which showed ninety spaces, uh, we lost four le- four spaces in the area, the new curb cut, and also due to the relocation of ADA parking. Um, Mr. Chair, in terms of waivers, there were three waivers that were approved in, uh, back in December as part of the original site plan, two of the three will remain unchanged, one was re- related to architectural roof lines, and the second was related to a survey matter. Uh, the third waiver related to section one ninety, one ninety-eight, minimum number of parking spaces, as I just mentioned, uh, we'll need to, uh, amend that waiver. Uh, ninety-three spaces are required, the previous waiver was granted for ninety, as I mentioned, we're losing four spaces with this change, so eighty-six total are provided. Uh, both the bank tenant and the property owner feel that there's ample parking on this lot for both uses, and there are already existing, uh, cross-access and parking agreements in place between this lot and the abutting lot next door, which has over four hundred and forty parking spaces on it, and it's owned by the same, uh, ownership entity, so... In summary, uh, we think the proposed site plan amendment is a reasonable request and conforms with the land use code. Uh, stipulations, uh, from staff are agreeable to our client, um, similar to the last case, I do wanna note that there was an updated, uh, letter from, uh, Mr. Mendola in the engineering department, that may or may not be in your packets, um, so, um, we could remove stipulation number three if you were so moved. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, questions for the applicant, Mr. Weber?
Yes. Uh, noticing the, um, handicap parking, uh, access to the, uh, the building, it's going across the entrance and exit, is it possible to have a, um, walkway similar to a lot of other places that, um, may not have right next to the building, they headed across, you know, there, and they put in like a, a striped walkway so people can see that this is a place for a, a person in a wheelchair or a person that's impaired or that cane or something, that they'll, if they're there, they'll see the driveway will show there's a crosswalk there, so...
A crosswalk striping, I'm not...
Yes, crosswalks, striping, going towards the buil- Yes, crosswalks, striping going towards the building. Because right there, there's nothing. It's just paved and, and a car may not see, um, a person walking. They may come in there fast and all of a sudden.
So I believe we are showing a crosswalk there in that location?
Okay, they're, you're going across on the.
There's two, two bars there.
Okay.
As it crosses.
Okay, um, it's small, so.
It is small.
Yeah. Okay, great, great. You're handling. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
General comment, Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mr. Ballinger.
If, this were a more intense use, uh, to be honest with you, the number of curb cuts, um, I think from an access management perspective is overdone a little bit. I think a bank is a relatively minor use. If this helps their circulation, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. But I, I would just like to point, maybe the, um, applicant's engineer could just point out. I, I'm just trying to get a better idea because I wasn't on the board for the original approval of this project. You've got one full access on the westerly end of your site, which is only about fifty-foot offset from driveway across the street, seventy-four Northeastern Boulevard. And then you've only got maybe about another fifty-foot offset from, I think it's a Saint Joseph's Healthcare Rehab Facility or something like that. So three full-access driveways within a little over a hundred feet. That's pretty, pretty tight as is. Add in another full-access driveway, maybe a hundred fifty, a hundred and seventy-five feet to the east, plus the existing one. This is the last, you know, major renovation for the site, and again, given the fact that it's, it's a bank, I, I, I would have less of an issue with it, but I think if this were a more intense retail, commercial use, I think that's, it's probably maybe more access and egress than you, than you might need, especially given the proximity of some of the other commercial interests in the area.
Yeah, I was, I would certainly agree with your, you know, general comment in terms of just the, the geometry out there and the number of curb cuts and adjacent sites. You're right, the, the bank is, is, is a relatively low intense use as well as the office. There's a little bit of a unique aspect to the bank and the drive-through, um, where you kind of, you come in off that uh, northerly curb cut, the new one, and you kind of loop around into the drive-through. And it's only a one-way going north to south between the two sites. So, um, I would say it is more of, of ease and convenience and, uh, uh, improving access to that open tenant space more so than, um, maybe driven by corridor management, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
So how much of the total space is the bank actually occupying?
I, I believe they're only occupying seventy-five hundred. So I, I believe it's, it's half of the first floor.
Okay.
It's about three-quarters of that building, including the entire second floor that I believe is, is unoccupied at this point.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned with the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Hearing none? Uh, any further questions for the applicant from the board or from sta- for staff during the hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, uh, move into the meeting. So, uh, so we've got sort of just basically a new curb cut. Um, you know, we did, I just, I'm thinking back. We had a lot of discussion about this site. And I think we might have even talked about it on the curb cut because of the way the bank configuration was and we were. We did have some concern with, um, people running through the bank area to get to the rest of it all the time because it's so.
That driveway is very busy.
Yeah, so, so I, you know, I, I think Mr. Ballinger has a good point. But, you know, this, this site's probably, I mean, I don't have an issue, I guess, totally with the, the new curb cut, so. Any further discussion on that, there Ballinger?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a, a matter of necessarily being against it. I, I think in this case, it may actually provide some, some relief. But just thinking out loud on a quarter like this, um, you know, this, there are still opportunities on parts of Northeastern Boulevard where you think, if you're thinking about connectivity between sites, I mean, again, I'm not trying to go back in time. There, there may have been an option for some sort of cross-easement with the property next door, but I guess we, most properties with this much frontage, you probably don't need three full-access curb cuts. Um, that would be my, my general comment. Um, that's nothing against this particular applicant, um, just being quite familiar with, with that area and the property across the street as well. Um, you know, just, just offered for, for commentary. Um, I, I think in this case, it's, it's, uh, you know, I think it's a fairly minor, minor point.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody who want to make a motion? Mr. Barley?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve new business number twelve site plan, finding that does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NR section one ninety dash one forty-six D. With, uh, a total of two stipulations. The first reading is written in the staff report, um, the second being a waiver request with respect to minimum parking. Um, and that waiver request reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and stipulation number three, uh, being deleted.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Mr. Barley with the stipulations as indicated. Do we have a second for that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So we have one nay, and that motion passes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Okay. So we'll now take new business site plan, case number ten. Um, this is, uh, Lynastis Family Trust in Alley Bird applicant. Application and acceptance of proposed dog daycare and boarding facility. Property is located at One Hardy Street. So do, can I have a motion as to whether or not this application is, um, complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
We have a, a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction. Um, any second? Second by Mr. Weber. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes.
Okay, we're ready.
Good evening. Uh, Chris Guida with Fieldstone Land Consultants, uh, representing Alley, uh, Bird. She's with the, in the audience tonight, uh, for a, for the proposed doggy daycare. This is a, um, permitted use in the zone. Um, it is a, the local business zone, um, and part of the, I'm going to go up to the board here. Um, so the area here, um, to the east, southeast is a Pan Asia, um, commercial, um, restaurant, um, residential, uh, to the north and the cemetery across the street. Um, this is an existing, um, all these existing buildings here in orange. Uh, the, the green, um, is basically grass area, vegetated area. And the yellow is the proposed outdoor, um, fenced-in area, which was, uh, we did receive a variance through the zoning board to allow that. They considered that a type of display area, uh, was the interpretation. There's really no display. It's just a fenced-in, um, area. So we did receive approval for that. The whole area here is, has existing fencing. It's a six-foot-high cedar stockade fence, um, with landscaping, um, around the area. I'm not sure if anybody had a chance to take a look at it. Um, there are some gaps in the fencing right now where there used to be, uh, some vehicle travel through here, uh, where you can see in the red lines. Uh, and we're proposing to close that off, um, to make a contained area, um, for the dogs to run. Now, the doggy daycare, um, I just wanted to stress a little bit, um, just the nature of the daycare. I'm not sure, um, how many folks are pet owners? Sure, sorry. Um, but it's not a, there's, there was a little bit of discussion at the zoning board. There was a little confusion, it seemed, as whether it was a type of a kennel, a type of area where the dogs would be penned up in the backyard and barking all the time. Um, that's not the situation here. This is simply like a child daycare where residents or homeowners would drop off their, their dogs, um, go to work, pick them up in the afternoon. There is a requirement for one parking space. Um, we're proposing two, as well as a handicap space here. And this building here would be the, the facility for the dogs. Um, this is an existing residence which would be occupied by, um, the app, the owner, proposed owner. We don't have any issues with the comments from the staff. Um, there was a few comments on fencing. And like I said, it's all existing. There's, there would be similar fencing put back in here. Um, there was a little bit of comments as far as whether it would be disturbing, um, roots, vegetation, of bushes. Um, it, there really isn't anything there. It's a grassed area. At the zoning, uh, board, we also discussed, um, waste management. There was a plan, I believe, in your packet as far as, um, how we're going to handle the waste. It will be picked up, um, consistently, um, when the animals are out there and be packaged, double-bagged, um, in a sealed container and picked up, uh, weekly through, uh, rubbish disposal. Um, there'll also be a, um, a disinfectant applied, which is, uh, EPA-approved and a biodegradable, um, green, um, disinfectant. They can be put on the, um, the lawn area. And as far as, um, the existing, this area right now is lawn, um, and it's proposed to basically have, um, also a turf um, in the near future, um, and which is like, uh, it's like an astral turf, um, has a little bit better drainage. Um, you don't have a lot of the, um, issues with, with soil, um, muddy feet, um, that sort of thing. So it's a little bit easier to maintain, um, with multiple dogs there. We're not talking about a hundred dogs. We're talking about, you know, ten or fifteen dogs, um, really is all we're looking for. Really no, there's, there's really no difference than a homeowner that lived there and had a lot of dogs either. We meet all the requirements, um, for the zoning and for the planning, I believe. I don't think there were any comments that we disagreed with, um, from the staff. The only waiver we were requesting is a similar one to the, the thousand-feet, um, existing conditions in the perimeter. We do show obviously, um, all the abutting properties and streets. That's, that's about it.
Okay. All right. So questions from the, uh, the board? Mr. Barley?
So I just want to clarify. In terms of the, the nature of the use, you said it was going to be sort of like drop-up, pick-up. Does that mean there's, there's no, there'll be no overnight?
There, there may be occasional boarding, um, during holidays, um, but it's, the primary usage is just daily usage, um, to drop off and pick up.
And, and I realize there may be a note somewhere, but what, what would the hours of operation be?
Um, it's most likely, um, right now, we're, it would probably be seven to seven would be the maximum span um, to allow enough time in the morning for folks to drop off the animals before they go to work. And again, in the evening to let them, uh, pick them up on their way home. And during the day, they would be supervised, um, consistently, a hundred percent. That's not some, an issue where the animals would be let out, um, in the backyard and left, left there unattended. There would be a hundred percent supervision all the time. The outside usage would probably be, obviously, would be dependent upon the season, uh, probably a little bit less, um, in the winter time um, or inclement weather, but, um, you know, maybe two or three hours a day. And they would be basically rotating in and out, um, of the, of the buildings.
Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, yes, or is there any cap on the number of, of dogs? You, you'd mentioned somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen, but I didn't know if there was code or statute that dictated there were certain spatial requirements or?
Right. There's, there's some standard requirements that, um, Ms. Bird may be able to speak to a little bit, but it, there's standard general practices, um, and she would adhere to those. And that would basically, for this size space, there's a certain number of square footage for larger dogs. Um, I believe it's, um, a hundred or a hundred, I wrote them down here, I apologize, but, um, it's somewhat less for smaller dogs. So probably twenty for that, for those square footages would be the maximum.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Uh, what is the composite of the staff there would be? What would be the composite, um, types of staff that would be there?
The number of staff?
Not the number, but the composite, the type of staff that you would be, uh, taking care of the dogs.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Are you going to have a, a, um, animal doctor there? Uh, how many staff-to-dog ratio are you going to have?
Right. So there, there would not be a veterinarian on-site, obviously, unless there were an emergency. Yeah, it's not, it's not a medical facility, um, but it would be, there's, the owner would be the primary, uh, employee and perhaps one other employee, I believe. Again, she may be able to speak to that a little bit better, um, but.
And so when they're out there, are you going to have someone out in the yard?
Yes, sir.
Per, how, so how many dogs are you saying that are going to be there?
Well, it would, it would vary. Uh, let's say twenty at the max, maximum.
How many people would be taking care of twenty dogs?
So let's say probably two people, um, but it doesn't mean that the twenty dogs would be all out at the same time. So it would be a management type of thing, and it depends on the dogs as well. Depending on the, the nature of the dogs, some dogs, you may not get along with other dogs, and you would basically sort that out and, um, and accordingly. So you wouldn't have them all out there at the same time.
So when they're not out there, where would they be and how their conditions would be?
Right. They would be inside, basically, in pens in the inside building, um, on the s- uh, westerly side there.
Soundproof?
It's normal building. We don't plan any changes to that. Um, there's really, you know, when they're managed as, as far as barking goes, they're not left unattended. And typically, when the dogs bark, it's an unattended dog. Um, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for the applicant?
I just think, I mean, just generally, and I, I did refer this a couple of times, if, maybe we could just hear from, um, Ms. Bird.
Sure.
Just to, just to describe a little bit more about the, the, how the, the business operates.
Sure.
Hello. Oh, I guess what?
Make sure you state your name.
Oh, sorry. I'm Alley Bird, um, and I live at thirty-four Franklin Street. Um, what specific questions do you have?
Well, I guess, uh, one of the, we received a letter here from, of support from, it sounds like someone who's currently a neighbor of yours. So I understand you, you currently operate a similar business at a different location?
Correct.
So I'm just wondering if, so, you know, Mr. Weber, for example, was asking a little bit about the staffing and, and, you know, and then we were talking a little bit about how sort of the dogs be rotated outside. So if you could just, maybe just, just give us a little bit of background on sort of how you operate now, how that compares now, you know, what, what sort of the basic model is?
Okay, um, yeah, so I've been watching dogs for the better part of a year now. Um, I have about three to eight dogs with me right now per day, um, during the business week. And, um, you know, we do our slow introductions to try and make sure that all dogs, uh, have a, a brand opportunity to get along with their, you know, companions while they're at daycare, um, which sets them off for, uh, a good stay. And so I haven't actually encountered a dog yet that I had, I, I've had to turn away one dog, but for the most part, they all can co-mingle in one group. Um, dogs tend to, well, I guess, or wolves, tend to. Dogs tend to, well, I guess, or wolves, tend to pack with five to eight animals. So the way that a lot of dog daycares are going now is that, you know, you don't put 30, 40 dogs in a group. You keep them in smaller groups and they're more comfortable that way. And that actually minimizes their stress, you know, risk of fights breaking out, them getting sick, things like that. But right now, at the house we're watching them out of, they kind of just go with me wherever I go. I, you know, I have a part-time remote marketing job too. And sometimes I'm just sitting there at the table and they're all passed out usually by noon because they've just been roughhousing with each other. So each day is definitely different than the last. Some days, depending on the group, there's a ton of energy. Some days, they just hang out sniffing things. I'm with them 24/7, so if I go outside, they're going outside. And then if they do get too rowdy outside, I go, "All right, guys, we're going in." And they all rush inside because they think it's exciting to go back in. So it's definitely kind of, you know, I'm the pack leader and they go where I go. And there's usually a couple hours where they all pass out, usually in the 12 to 2-ish range. And, you know, at times when we have to step out of the room or, you know, to answer the door and take in another dog or something like that, I kind of anticipate that. And we have a system set up so that people can let us know that they're at the door before the dogs realize it, so that the dogs don't go berserk. Because that's, that's one of the biggest challenges of watching the dogs is just when they see, you know, the outside stimulus. Hence why we want the fence to all be solid, you know, we're going to keep the dogs away from the windows. They won't have access to see outside stimulus, which could set them off. So everything, like the floor plan and everything that we have for the building renovations that we're proposing is meant to keep the dogs comfortable and quiet. And really, barking, I mean, there's some to initiate play, but that's the most, that's most of it. And that's, you know, nipped in the bud right away, so. Yeah, they kind of just are my little group and I'm just basically looking to take the group I have now and then maybe just double that size. As for employees, it's me, I'm the owner, I'm the, you know, runner of it. And then my mom is also going to be an employee as well, so she'll be part-time. And we're just, this is more of a small family business than anything, so, yeah. It's my, it's my dream. Yeah, I left a decade of software marketing for this, so. Does that answer your questions?
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Varley?
I did just have a follow-up. No, it was for you. Are there, are there spatial or, you know, statutory code requirements that you need to follow with regard to maxes or?
There's standard, there's industry best practices, which is about 50 to 60 square feet per small to medium dog and then 100 square feet per large dog. We are planning on keeping this a small to medium dog business, just for safety and space reasons. We don't want, you know, a giraffe in there and be like, "Okay, well, that's full." But yes, we're aiming to stay within best practices.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
So, sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
Right now, you're having a certain, you have like 12 dogs, you're saying?
It's usually three to eight on any given day.
Okay, and then you want to double that. Do you, do you see, and your mother's going to be part-time, so if you have 20, are you, okay, what's the maximum amount of area, because of your area, you're going to be able to house?
Depending on the sizes of dog, probably 20. I wouldn't want to take in more than that and that's if, that's if they're on the smaller side too. Most of the daycares in the area and in the US, actually, they usually keep the staff-to-dog ratio at 1 to 15 on average. So if we're following what they are all doing, you know, we could have one person managing 15 dogs. But it really depends on the layout, can you see everything, what's the nature of the dogs? Do you have a bunch of dogs that are different sizes? Do they all get along?
Right.
There's, sorry, a lot of factors.
No, it is, and that's important for us too.
Yeah.
So if you went to 20, would you, would you put somebody else on your staff full-time because of 20 people?
Yeah, I mean, there would, it would probably be something where my mom picks up extra hours or something like that. But I only anticipate reaching that during peak holiday times and, you know, really when people are mega-traveling.
The other reason I'm saying it is, people get sick. You're going to get sick at times.
Don't get sick, Mom.
So I'm just saying, you may need to really consider, you know, I know your mother.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I have people in mind that have expressed interest to help out and stuff. But it would probably be more of a, you know, hey. And also, my boyfriend will be actually kind of filling in the gaps as needed as well. He's, he's in this too, but he's not, you know, as, he's got his own full-time job, so, but.
Have you ever had a dog jump over the six-foot fence?
No, I have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Harbor?
Oh, did you, and this may be in the literature here somewhere, but are you living at this property? Or will you be living at the property?
Yes, we will be, yeah, because the idea is that, you know, someone has to be on the premises at all times. And I, like, right now, when I'm boarding a dog, they're essentially my dog while they're with me. They're, you know, sleeping on the floor, sleeping in the bed, whatever. And for my regulars or for dogs that are well-behaved enough, ultimately, I'm trying to offer them, I'm trying to offer customers a more comfortable experience instead of, you know, here's a kennel, stick your dog in there and let it bark all night and be sick in the morning from anxiety. Sorry, I went on a ramble there. But, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board for the applicant?
Oh, well, is that relevant? I'm also in the process of becoming a certified dog trainer. I don't know if that throws it in there, but.
Good for you.
Yeah. Figured I'd mention it.
All right.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anything else you wanted to add before I open up to the audience? Just state your name because we're on audio only.
Sure, Chris Geida with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I think that, that pretty much covered it. I just wanted to go over again that, just restate that it is a permitted use and that we do meet all the requirements for that use in the area.
Okay, all right. Ms. Harbor?
You may have already said this, but is this only Monday through Friday or seven days a week?
Daycare is Monday through Friday?
If you could just come up to the mic, we've got to get you for the record.
State your name again, just because it's all audio.
Ally Byrd, speaking. Yeah, daycare is offered Monday through Friday, but boarding would be just constant and ongoing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant before I go? All right. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan? If so, go ahead, come on up. Make sure you state your name and address for the record and let us know what your questions or concerns might be.
I'm Clayton Alexander at 1 Amherst Terrace. The first thing I want to point out is that Ms. Byrd has neglected to mention that she has been illegally running her current business out of a residentially zoned location at 5 Indiana Drive. There's currently a case open with code enforcement. Officer Lawrence Phillips has given her until December 15th to close it down. So that makes me less than confident about her willingness to abide by any zoning regulations. Okay, the board cannot approve a site plan application that violates the zoning requirements. NRO 190-146-D2 is applicable to all site plans and states, quote, "The site plan shall comply with all the applicable requirements of Part II. Part II includes 190-52, permanent outdoor display areas. The recent variance was granted to allow an outdoor area under 190-52-A. According to the planning department and the zoning board, this is an outdoor display area. The requirements of the entire ordinance apply. This isn't optional. The applicant and the board don't get to cherry-pick which sections to comply with. There aren't any additional variances from the other sections. The site plan has to comply with all the requirements of 190-52. It obviously does not comply. Here are a few examples. A minimum setback of 20 feet from an adjoining property line is required. All of the houses on Amherst Terrace have property lines that directly adjoin and contiguous abut the back property lines of Hardy Street. We're deeded a two-foot strip of land on the opposite side of the street. Apparently, no one has bothered to look at the abutter's deeds. The site plan map has a serious error because it doesn't show our property lines correctly. My front yard, my front property line is shown on the wrong side of the street. The deed is the legally binding description of the property. The site plan makes no provision whatsoever for the required setback and it doesn't buffer or protect my property in any way. Also, the outdoor area must be located on the same lot as the principal use. The 1 Hardy Street deed and city plan show it's divided into two lots, the house on one, the commercial building on the other. The principal business lot has no backyard and doesn't meet the setback, so that area can't be used. The house lot will be used residentially, not commercially, so that lot can't be used at all. The site plan doesn't even show the lots. Also, the area must be furnished with an all-weather asphalt or concrete hard surface. This is mostly grass. There are more problems. Using the existing fencing is grossly inadequate for waste management of at least 10 or 15 or 20 dogs. It's old, bare, rotting wood with no waterproofing or protective coating. It will absorb and retain dog urine, be impossible to wash off and stink. Dogs can easily dig under it. Also, there's nothing to minimize the impact of noise disturbance with soundproofing or deal with runoff from spraying an acidic chemical cleaner all over the yard. The site plan doesn't meet the same standards as other dog daycares with outdoor areas. Chiwi's playland on West Hollis has less square footage, vinyl fencing, astroturf on an asphalt surface, and appears to be, to comply fully with the ordinance. So do other dog daycares. By comparison, this site plan is shoddy and not up to professional standards. This project is being done on the cheap. There should be new fencing, asphalt and astroturf for waste management. The applicant told the zoning board she might put down astroturf in the future if she could afford it. She's requesting a waiver based on financial hardship. She's unwilling or unable to invest the money needed to construct this outdoor area properly. Also, the Section 279 double E waiver should be denied because the site plan map already within 50 feet doesn't provide correct information for the site or the abutting properties. The property lines don't reflect the registry of deeds. It doesn't show the two lots on the site or their uses as commercial or residential. It incorrectly shows 1 and 3 Amherst Terrace as LB-zoned. It doesn't show the landscaping on my side of the back fence. The waiver is contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, which is to provide an accurate description of existing conditions. This site plan clearly violates the ordinance requirements. It has serious errors. It will have a negative effect on public health, safety, nuisance, property values, and aesthetics. It doesn't coexist with and has a significant negative impact on the surrounding uses. It doesn't provide adequate protection for the abutting residential properties. For all these reasons, it should be denied. And I've got the deeds, I can show you on the map if you, if you have any questions about inaccuracies on the map.
Do we take copies of the deeds at the record or?
I mean, we can take copies, but you have to leave them with us.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
And you can have them back after the cases.
That's fine, okay, sure.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any questions for? Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan? Please go ahead and come forward and mind your state, your name and address for the record.
My name's Mike Burt and I live at 3 Amherst Terrace. Initially, I was on the fence about a doggy daycare coming next door. I'm a dog owner myself, so I thought maybe it'd be convenient. But then upon further reflection, I felt compelled to speak out about the reasons that I will lay forward. According to the Land Use Code 190-146 subsection D, the site plan must coexist with the surrounding area and should not have a significant impact. Although this is cited as zone for business, I believe this particular business would devalue the surrounding property values. This is based on both, on both the opposition tonight as well as the opposition at the zoning board. This, also, this proposed plan suggests that there would be boarding, so it would be open for 24 hours. And this is out of character with the other businesses in the zone. Also, based on my understanding, the plan must provide adequate protection for an approachment on adjoining residential land uses. Me and my girlfriend live, I kind of want to point it out here.
Sure.
So we live right here, this is 3 Amherst Terrace. So the, the back of the property here, there's a gate here on the fence. So the prior business would park along this area. So then we were backing out of our driveway, it was harder for us to, like, we'd be worried about running into their cars. Also, they would park here as well, so we were also worried about if something would happen to the, it was all the employees parked there. The people going to the chiropractors office parked actually over here. So we were worried if anyone ever slipped and fell, that we'd be liable for that. So we're concerned about that. So if this did move forward, we'd ask that the gate be closed off so that it would deter parking there. As Clayton mentioned, we do own that strip of property there too as well, like, on the other side of the street. So it's deeded in ours, in our deed as well, that the two-foot property from, across the street from us. So right here, we own from here to here, wherever our property line ends. So that is our property right there. I don't have a copy of my deed, but I could provide one if needed.
Can you just clarify that for me?
Sure, yeah, so I think.
I think that your deed has property on both sides?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, I could be wrong, I don't know, but I think a terrace means that there's only houses on one side of the street. And because of that, that's why we own it, I'm not sure. But yeah, the deed of right is two-foot, two-foot property from, across my, across the street from my house, yeah.
Yeah, just look like where you're pointing, it almost looks like it was in the, in the right of way. But you're saying it's, so, I don't know, maybe you could just.
Sure, I'll come back up, yeah.
Clarify again?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so I think, and I was, I'm confused too, like Clayton mentioned. It says we're a local business, but we're residential here. But yeah, so this is my house across the street here, right here, along the property edge of the proposed daycare. We own that property. And then Clayton owns from here, from here to here. So I'm, I'm not sure, it says local business, as Clayton mentioned. And I'm not sure if, if I have some local business zoning and also residential zoning, so that kind of confuses me. And I'm just not sure if it's, if it's all residential, then I'm not sure the plan's accurate, but. And so in addition, according to 190-52-C, I believe that's to be a 20-foot rear setback. And based on the site plan, I don't see that. And since that is not satisfied, that requirement's not satisfied for this reason, I think the site plan cannot be approved. Also, 190-52-G requires that the outdoor display have a hard surface. The site plan does not satisfy this requirement and for that reason, I think the site plan cannot be approved. The, there is like a carport there that they are going to fill in, which I do, I would, I guess if, if a business is there, I would prefer that it is filled in so that. if a business is there, I would prefer that it is filled in so that, again, so that parking wouldn't happen on our side, like, on Amherst Terrace. But, I think, I could be wrong too, and this could be a zoning board thing, but if they're building an additional fence, would they need a setback from our property variance there as well? Is it, is, and then, I think one of the things that you guys are considering is property value. I'm not sure if the applicant has to prove that it wouldn't hinder the property value, I'm not sure how that works, what side the, like, burden of proof is on, I guess. I was just curious if there'd be any signage as well? And if there is a proposed limit on dogs, like, how would that be enforced? And then, any stipulations on that? And I'm just curious if the two-foot property was accounted for during the staff review. I'd just like to thank you guys for your time and letting me voice my concerns, if you guys have any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan? Please go ahead and come on up and state your name and address for record.
Hi, I'm Tim Taper. I'm on Seven Amherst Terrace, one of their neighbors. We're right across the street from this location. We're all residential and rather close, and very concerned about not only these statements, these points these people have pointed out, but I can't help but, if you're reasonable, to think that this many dogs, and the number keeps increasing every time I hear about this, from a few to quite a few, there's going to be a smell, there's going to be a noise that I am not warmed to. I don't want to put up with that. If you have a disinfectant of some kind that you're using, that's going to smell. So, I don't see where we're going to win whatsoever with such a situation, being crammed into a tight area. I'm with these people with this negative feeling toward all of this. That's, okay, it's very short and to the point, don't want it.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Allison Hogan, Seven Hardy Street, and I'll be one of the abutting neighbors there. So, for this site plan, the requirements of Section 190-TAC-52 apply. This is the site plan regulation, 190-TAC-146-D2, that says Part II of the code must be satisfied, and 190-TAC-52 is part of that code. That's the outdoor display area. The site plan doesn't satisfy 190-TAC-52.C, as in Charlie. The site plan does not show the required twenty-foot setback from my property side, which is on the south side, as you're looking at the map, the left side. So, to that end, from my concern, that can't be approved. Certainly, the other neighbors on Amherst Terrace also have a point. Their deeded land that's setback has to be shown twenty feet, and it's not showing there. Also, the site plan does not satisfy 190-TAC-52-G, as in golf, which requires that all areas used for outdoor display must be all-weather hard surface. Again, it's been emphasized that it's green grass, it's grass, it's grass. If they're using that ordinance to cover the outdoor display, it clearly states it has to be asphalt. So, it can't be applied for that reason. Those are my two concerns there in regards to this plan that's been proposed to the board. I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you. Do you have any questions? No?
I don't think so, anybody? Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Richard Hooky. I live at Eight Indiana Drive, across the street from where Ali is temporarily in business, I guess you'd say. And addressing the issue of noise and odors, there's no noise and there's no odor. I wasn't aware of what she was doing for some time, a few months, then I got to talking to her and found out what she was doing. I have a dog, I have a lab, and so now, I've brought him over there a few times. The place is very well kept up, very clean. I've had my dog over there playing with the other dogs a few times. And none of the other neighbors have any complaints about it. Wouldn't bother me at all if she's just stayed there, really. And I think that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? All right, just checking. No, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay. So, at this point, I would ask, or offer, that the applicant be able to come up and maybe address, I think there's a, I don't know if you've probably taken notes on some of the stuff, but definitely had some questions regarding setbacks, some questions regarding the surface in the display area, essentially. And then, you know, some questions about the accuracy of the property lines with regard to potential deed information, so...
Chris Geida with Fieldstone Land Consultants. As far as the asphalt goes in an outdoor display area, there's a little bit of question in there. I believe that the zoning board and the zoning staff have already addressed that. The way that the staff has interpreted an outdoor display area, I don't necessarily agree with that, but it's not for me to decide. That's why we went to that board, to get the variance for that, for that specific interpretation of the regulations, which I think stemmed from a previous approval also, that they interpreted it that way as well. And there was a similar doggy daycare that was approved in town in a somewhat compact area with residences around, in a very similar situation. As far as the specifics of the asphalt in a display area, I don't really believe that it's applicable in this situation. The strict interpretation, or legal interpretation, or the leeway that the zoning board has, I deferred to them for that. I believe that they would have addressed that issue if they felt that it was applicable, and they didn't. Again, we could request some clarification from them on that, on those comments. I'm simply not qualified to comment on that, on their interpretation. As far as the boundary goes and the terrace issue, I'm not a land surveyor myself, I'm a wetland scientist and a soil scientist. We obviously do have land surveyors. That is an issue that I wasn't aware of. It's the first I've heard. Typically, when we prepare a site plan, there is some cursory research on, obviously, the site deed and easements and things that exist with that. There's also some typically, some research as far as the abutters, as far as the extent of that research and what it turned up. I don't have that with me. It is something that we can certainly look into and see if there actually is two feet on the other side of the road owned by them, whether they own the road as well. I'm not sure, but we can certainly find out answers to that question and put it, and get clarification on that. And I think that applies also to the setbacks that they were talking about with the twenty feet. Obviously, if their property is on the other side of the road, that's not an issue. We're not proposing to change anything. If they do own a two-foot strip of road, and it has to be twenty feet to that, we can certainly look into that, but until that becomes an issue, I think we'll have to see if that is applicable. As far as the fencing goes, there were some comments made implying that the fencing was dilapidated and falling down and inappropriate. I think it's, it goes without saying, if there was something, a maintenance issue that had to be resolved or something that was necessary to run the business, that would be done. I did drive by there. The fence looks pretty nice to me. All the landscaping looks pretty nice. I mean, as far as structurally, I wasn't playing with it, but that would be something that would certainly be inspected before anything went into use to make sure that there weren't any gaps in the fence, any areas that would be, you know, pose a risk to the animals or getting out of the area at all. So, I think certainly, it would make sense, obviously, with any new property, to look at it, inspect it thoroughly, and make any necessary repairs. I think that covered most of the comments.
Yeah, I'm looking at my notes here. I guess I'm unclear on, a little bit on the, sort of, the hard surface. So, you said you reviewed those particular sections?
Right.
Your interpretation is...
Yeah.
...clear to me what you were indicating, whether you agree that it should be a hard surface.
Well, the use is permitted in the zone.
Right.
And the act of having a fenced-in area for the dogs, an outside area, was interpreted by zoning staff to be an outdoor display area.
Right.
I think, I think personally, that that probably was more intended to be where if someone actually has an outdoor display area, like, selling automobiles or perhaps storage of things, lawn equipment, commercial use like that, where you actually are displaying something for sale. I'm not sure why they made that interpretation, but it certainly is worth looking into, and I think they've made it once other in this same type of situation with a doggy daycare situation, so...
Mr. Barley?
Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the relief you received from the zoning board was a use variance. So, it was to permit the, I guess, well, the way it reads here is requesting use variance to permit a fenced-in area for outdoor use, so you didn't, there was not a request for exceptions to the zoning standards necessarily.
That's correct. It was strictly the determined use, again, it doesn't really apply. I'm struggling with it because I don't think that it really applies in this situation, but I think that's what they have used in the past in a similar one that was approved. Again, it logically doesn't make sense. An asphalt hard-surface display area does make sense for something where you're displaying machinery, things for sale, not for a dog outdoor backyard area, so... And I don't think that that was the intent of the board either, that that be applied in strict adherence to that regulation. But, again, I can't really speak for them, but I think it's certainly worthwhile getting some comment from staff to see their interpretation on those other sections that the folks mentioned as far as the asphalt surface.
Was there any other feedback from zoning that you folks received with that regard?
Well, the similar daycare, doggy daycare was out at, I think it was Two Seventeen West Hollis Street, Chewie's, that the board approved not that long ago. And with that one, they did use the existing parking lot, and they did put a vinyl fence around it, and they used that for the doggy daycare area, and so that is a hard surface. When they went to the zoning board, it was just for the use, like Mr. Barley said, they just got relief from that. I think we really should get some clarification from the zoning administrator, because this isn't something that the planning board can waive, the hard surface. And then, there's also the issue that there has to be a twenty-foot minimum setback from the property line, so we'd want to get clarification from him as well, I think, regarding that, before this board would make a decision.
Right, those are zoning...
Correct.
...mandated, yeah, so... And then, as far as the deed information, do we know if that's, that hasn't been reviewed by city?
No, we wouldn't...
Is it new information or whether it's accurate or not? I don't know, but...
I mean, we would not, city staff would not be reviewing that, at least planning staff would not be. I think it would probably be a good idea for the engineer to maybe have his surveyor look into it, and then perhaps the gentleman can give us copies of the deeds as well so we could have it to look into.
Okay, yeah.
But I think it really should be the applicant's engineer, their responsibility to do a full research and...
Understood, yeah, yeah. Other questions for the applicant or the engineer we have up here?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
With the synthetic turf, the artificial grass, is there a recommended under layer? I mean, what is supposed to go under that material?
Yes, and I believe the details were in the package. It's similar to, so it's like a, you know, a plastic type of turf, and then there's a drainage section underneath it. I believe it's probably about four inches or so, and then basically goes into the soil there. So, you have to have a well-drained soil. The soils in this area are actually hinkley winter soils, which is an excessively drained soil, sands, gravel, so it would lend itself to excellent drainage with that type of material.
So, at this site, that material, the, you know, the artificial grass will be put down according to the recommended under, undersurface?
Right, to the manufacturer's...
It's just not going to be like laying out a carpet on the dirt?
No, 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 because that won't work. Because what happens is, there's obviously the loam layer, the organics on top of the soil. When you compact that, it basically doesn't allow the water to filter through, so you have to remove those organics. So, you would remove the top soil, and then, so you had the subsoil, the mineral soil beneath it, and then you would have that structure on top of it.
Over time, all those disinfectants and germ killers and animal dander and everything that's all going to go into the soil and accumulate over time, don't you think?
It basically gets broken down in the soils. You have microbial activity in the soils that break all that down. That cleanser is a biodegradable as well, so those things are going to get naturally broken down and processed through all the bacteria in the soil.
Okay, good to know, thanks.
Sure.
But right now, the current site plan, the use of the astroturf, for lack of a better term at this point, that's not, that's not, like, in the plan, like, that's...
No, it's not, it's not specifically called out at this time. It's intended to be. Initially, it wasn't intended to be put down in the first, you know, when it first started. It was one, it is a financial issue, purchasing it, so it's something that, you know, once there's enough, basically, money to support to buy that, you know, then it would be installed. If it were something that the board felt was absolutely necessary, we could certainly consider that.
But at this point, that could be in, literally, in conflict with the hard surface requirement.
Absolutely, absolutely, which is why I struggled with it a little bit.
Mr. Peterson?
What's the hard surface? What are we talking about?
Well, it's the display area wording, or, you know, the requirements of the display area.
The zoning requirements, like asphalt.
Yeah.
Which would be, would make no sense here, but practically, but...
Yeah, so...
And this is a rental property, so if you invest in all of that artificial turf, when it comes time... when it comes time to move, does it come with you or does it get left behind? It's a big business decision.
Yeah. I mean, it, I mean, they would own the property and, and live there.
They would own the property?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
So right now, the applicant does not own the property, but they will?
That's correct.
Other questions? All right, so the, what we would do normally in, in this sort of hearing, we're still in the hearing at this point, if there is folks in the audience, which I know there was a handful, that have, want to discuss the rebuttal from the engineer here, one person can do that. I would try to keep your points to the rebuttal, I mean, we've recorded all your previous stuff.
Yeah, I will. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's obvious. Oh, I...
I, I think your, your neighbors were trying to get your attention.
Yeah, you can take a second, that's okay.
Do you, do you want to see the, a copy of the deed?
Uh, staff will take it.
Could you leave it with us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, do I need to state my name again? Clayton Alexander, One Amherst Terrace. You know, I, I think it's pretty obvious that Fieldstone hasn't done its homework on this. Uh, you know, and I haven't heard a, a single reason why they don't have to comply with the 190-52 and the outdoor, uh, display area requirements. Um, you know, he's talking about issues that are related to the zoning board, and, you know, this site plan right now is within the purview of the planning board, that's what is, is at issue. Nothing that the zoning board said has anything to do with this site plan right here, right now. Excuse me. Uh, you know, I'd also say that, you know, I mean, the bottom line here is that, you know, the site plan has to comply with that ordinance, that variance, you know, as odd as it is, and I, and I admit it's putting us in an odd situation. And, you know, I, I mean, I'm, we are appealing the zoning board decision, and so we will, we will be filing that before October 24th. But, yeah, you know, I mean, there, there's no way around this. They, they have to comply with that ordinance. That variance says that this is an outdoor display area, so it has to comply with it. Um, you know, you can't have it both ways here. You can't say that, you know, I, I think, I think he's trying to have it both ways. You can't say that, well, you know, it, 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 it's an outdoor display area for the purpose of allowing a, a dog area as a permitted use, but on the other hand, all the requirements that apply to a dog, to an outdoor display area, well, we don't have to observe any of those. You know, I mean, this is putting us in, in an absurd situation where, you know, if, this was a, 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 a display area for potted plants, it would be more regulated than, you know, a, a bunch of, you know, barking and defecating dogs. I mean, that, that is just inherently absurd. You know, my, my other point would be, you know, I mean, they, they, they keep comparing this to a residential kind of situation, and, you know, the, with, you know, I'm, now, now it's like up to 20 dogs, there's no limits that, that have been, been put on this. The zoning board did not put any kind of, you know, restrictions on this, so we don't know, you know, how this is going to end up. Uh, you know, Ms. Byrd has said that, you know, she, she eventually wants to open an animal shelter, uh, you know, it, it, you know, it's just, it's not good enough, you know, there haven't, so far, there haven't been any attempts to, for a reasonable regulation or restriction on any of this. Uh, you know, I mean, you know, they're saying, well, we're going to follow standard practices, or, you know, we promise that, you know, one day we're going to put down AstroTurf, or, you know, we're, we're going to do this, and don't worry, the, the cleaner is, you know, environmentally friendly and biodegradable. You know, I mean, they, they said the same thing about, you know, Roundup, so, you know, pardon me for not trusting what, what the corporation says about its product on that. Um, you know, there, there's clearly health side effects. It says that on, on the chemical data sheets for that cleaner. Um, you know, and, and again, this is, this is right up against my yard, my front yard. So, you know, I mean, promises aren't enough. There has to be some way to effectively regulate and restrict this. And, you know, we're kind of in a limbo because, you know, we're not sure, you know, how this outdoor display area will apply to this particular situation with the dogs. So, uh, you know, I, I mean, there, there have been a lot of legal errors that have been made along the way here, and, you know, there's kind of, you know, passing the buck between the zoning board and the planning board. So, you know, I mean, something that needs to be done about regulating this properly. And this site plan that's being presented to you right now doesn't do any of that. It's basically, you know, we're, we're going to fix a few, a few holes in the fence, and that's it, the dogs are going to run wild and, and do their thing. And, and all the, all this, you know, and also, also just say that this, oh, the dogs are quiet and, you know, stuff like that. You know, just, just look at her Facebook page, she has videos of the dogs running around in the morning, and they're barking loudly, they're biting at each other, they're fighting. I mean, you know, it, it's just, just ridiculous to say that dogs don't bark, or, you know, they're, they're, you know, they don't, that, you know, they're not going to cause a, a smell or, you know, waste, waste management problem. It's just, but ridiculous. So, uh, you know, I, I, like, like I say, you can't approve an application that violates the zoning requirements. I mean, you're, the Planning Board handbook from the state specifically says that. So, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't think you have any choice but to deny, to deny this. You know, and I, I think that's, that's your obligation under the law, so, you know, that, that's my argument on this.
Great, thanks, appreciate it.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Could you please restate the, the statute that you, the 190 what?
Yeah, it's 190 dash 52, and there are sections A through J, so the A through J. Uh, the ordinance, the, I'm sorry, the variance, the use variance was granted under section A, which, what, what the use variance did, okay, under section A, an LB, LB zone is not permitted to have any kind of outdoor display area. So what the use variance did was add, since this, this business is in an LB zone, was add LB and make an outdoor display area of permitted use, if, if that makes any sense. Okay, so by that, by that fact, that makes all of that ordinance apply, if you understand what I'm, what I'm saying.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the, the applicant or staff? So, I guess...
I think we do it, we'll close the hearing and then...
Yeah, I think, yeah, so my thought here is, we're at the point where I typically close the hearing and move to the meeting. We have the option, obviously, anytime to reopen the hearing through a motion, but I'm going to close the hearing at this point, so we can move into a meeting and discuss it ourselves here, so. So I have a couple thoughts here. Again, we, we seem to have a, a situation where we've got some questions, at least I do, I'll say, regarding interpretation of the zoning approval, as well as deeds again, which is kind of interesting, that's come up twice tonight, but it hasn't come up for six months before that, but, you know, so that's, those two things, I think, are, are questions that I would like to get answered, or get clarifications on, or I can go too far with things. But I'm interested to know what the rest of you have for questions or concerns I want to talk about here in the meeting.
I, I would concur, Mr. Chair. I would just, just like to add, I, correct me if I'm wrong, this board is not going to be the, the arbiter of dueling deeds. It's incumbent upon the applicant, based on the surveyor and engineer stamp on the plan, saying that they've done their due diligence with regard to research, and if there is some glitch in chain of title or some odd circumstance where, you know, something unusual occurred, I, I guess I, that's more of a question than a, than a comment. I don't think we should be in that position where we're...
No, and, and I, we don't get involved with that, but we do, we can slow down the train, if you will, if we feel like there is a more investigation needed and warranted, and I think the, even the engineer has indicated that they might want to look at that, so...
And that, that...
So, so that's a legitimate effect, you know, what we can do.
And that, that I would, I would concur with that approach. I just didn't, you know, again, relatively new on the board here, I didn't want to be weighing...
Yeah, and just as a matter of...
Deed A versus deed B.
As a matter of course, if there is a zoning appeal...
Correct.
Those results of those are, we need to get through those before we can actually move forward anyway.
It would be a good idea for, before planning makes a decision on this, to hear the outcome of zoning. I understand they have until October 24th to file that appeal.
Correct.
Once they file, or actually, it's a rehearing request. Once they file that, then it'll be scheduled on the ZBA agenda, which will probably be sometime in November, and at that point, they'll decide whether or not they want to grant the rehearing or not. If they grant it, then it gets scheduled for another ZBA meeting at a later date.
Right.
So it, it could take another month or so to go through that process.
But we need zoning before...
Yeah, we also need to get some clarification from the zoning administrator on the outdoor display areas and their interpretation, if it needs to go back to ZBA, if they're not going to meet all that criteria, but I think we should have his input.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the board have specific information they want from the zoning administrator? I mean, I think the outdoor display area, the...
Yeah, I, I think, well, first of all, I mean, because, again, just reading the, the zoning decision we have here, I mean, it does appear like the, the variance was granted as to the use, so I guess I would want to understand, you know, sort of, what was the initial interpretation? I mean, it sounds like they were saying, this is this outdoor display area, that's why you need to come request the use variance, because it wouldn't be permitted use otherwise. But did the zoning board understand that they were granting broader relief than that? Or i- is there otherwise a reason why the, you know, the, the specific requirements for the, the outdoor display area, you know, the zoning variance would not be applicable here for some other reason? So I guess that's what I would understand, and, and then, Mr. Ballinger, I agree with you in, in terms of the, the deed issue where, you know, and we talked about it earlier, where, you know, as far as, typically, as far as deeds go, we'd say, well, it's, it's a matter, you know, it's, it's a private matter as opposed to sort of, you know, what is the zoning setback. But I do think here, it's, it's not unreasonable to ask the applicant to, as you said, you know, do a little bit more due diligence to understand, you know, whether there's, whether there's a, a different property line that would, you know, impact what the setback would be, for example. So I, I would certainly, I would be in favor, you know, given those thoughts of, you know, tabling this to a, to a future meeting, and I think we just need to think about, you know, when we would, if the board was so inclined to do that, when we would table it until, I think it would probably be worth, you know, giving the, at least the, the sort of rehearing process time to play out, determine whether the zoning board would grant a rehearing. I, I don't know that I would, you know, if, if it were, so, you know, once the, the board, the zoning board has made that decision, I think it's reasonable for us to proceed, but we might want to allow that process to play out.
Okay.
There was...
I'm not sure, the, the only concern I have is the tying the table to zoning rehearing.
Yeah, I guess I...
There is no, no actual, I mean, I know that some folks from the, from the public have indicated that they want to appeal, but that, that doesn't mean they have to.
No, no, I agree. I, I, I didn't mean, yeah, I didn't mean to suggest that we would tie it to that, I just mean, perhaps like in, in, instead of saying the November 7th meeting, maybe we push it out, one more meeting, in, in that way, there's a, you know...
There's space for it.
There's space for it.
Yeah.
But no, I agree with you.
I want to bring it back up here reasonably quickly, I mean, it's, we don't want it to drag out just the way it is.
Yeah, and let me just see, we do have, so...
We have a meeting November 21st.
21st, right.
And it will probably, the rehearing request will probably go to the zoning board on November 12th. So by the 21st, we, it, we should know one way or the other.
Okay, so that might be a good starting date.
And I think that's still reasonably quickly for the applicant, so they're not, you know, waiting excessive period of time to...
Okay.
Take it back up.
Scott, there was two, I think there was two...
Whoever?
Brought up, two conflicting ordinances or something that the, they brought up, that one conflicted with the other.
Well, it was really just the hard surface, you know...
Yeah, but there was another one that I think he said he was talking about.
The other one was, is really a setback issue, so...
Yes.
And then that...
Yeah, but we can review that.
The person in opposition, I think he was citing, was it NRO, 190 dash 52, A through J?
Right, yeah, they're all in there.
That's the National Revised Ordinance we're talking about?
Yes, yeah, they're all in there.
So...
But we can...
That's another question mark, I mean, is there validity to his concern, or we, we, we can't make a decision on the fly until we look at it?
Right, I think that's what we're talking about, getting in, input from the zoning administrator.
Yes, exactly, that's what I'm talking about, yes.
Okay.
Oh, and also, the, the disinfectant that they're using, I would like to just look it up and see if it's hazardous.
Yeah, I mean, you'll have time to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion on this? We're in the meeting here, so we can't, or do we feel more discussion is necessary, or are we delving into a...
May I ask just one question, Mr. Chair? Is, is there a point at which, if you're asked for a motion for rehearing at the ZBA, well then, what's the next step? Somebody going to threaten to bring this to Superior Court for, like, I, I guess, how much longer are we obligated to let? Because we, we've accepted jurisdiction over this, so...
Yeah, I mean, we've had some that, you know, we, we have to bring it back up, you know, but we can, we can re-table based on, and then, at that point, you can put a, you know, if we know more about where it's going, we can put, you know...
Okay.
To a certain hearing or a certain, if, if one gets scheduled.
Right, and the other thing, I would say, I, I don't think that we're legally obligated to wait, you know, if there's an appeal at the zoning, zoning board.
Right.
We're not legally obligated to wait for it, it's just practically. So I would, you know, my personal view, and not everyone may share this, but I would say, because the rehearing process is going to happen, you know, whether the board is going to grant a rehearing, you know, that's going to happen pretty quickly. So, as Mr. Clares said, we, I think we can then reevaluate, but, you know, I think it would get to a point where I think, you know, we could say, for example, you know, if we were going to approve the application, we could approve it with a condition, you know, if there's, if there's an outstanding zoning issue, for example.
Okay, all right. But right now, without understanding the setback need in some of those, the plan could materially change too much for, I think, us to stipulate myself, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, again, you know, personally, I, I'm less concerned about the, the possibility of a rehearing than just not adequately understanding, you know, you know, the, sort of the, the larger zoning issue and how it applies here, so.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right. Want to make a motion?
I, I just, one other...
Go ahead, Mr. Barley.
Sorry, just one other sort of process point, because we, we did close the public hearing, so I would just suggest that, in the context of the motion, we maybe sort of clarify, you know, again, we're, we're looking for input on these specific points.
Yeah.
Because there may very well...
Because there may very well be a need or desire to reopen the public hearing, you know, at the next meeting. I think we should just clarify that the, that any testimony that we would take at that subsequent meeting would be limited to, you know, the subjects that, that we're receiving input on. So, we're not going to, you know, we're not, effectively, we're not going to rehear the entire application.
Right. Okay. Yeah, and I think we would want understanding of, you know, setbacks. And what else would we want to include in there?
I, I think it's, I think it's, you know, sort of applicability of the specific zoning standards. And I know, you know, somebody in the butters mentioned the hard surface and, and setback requirements specifically.
Oh, and, and the NRO. I mean, do we meet everything that, that it calls for?
Right, yeah. I mean, I think that's, it's, you know, the 190 52, you know, in the sub-sections, yeah. And sort of what, again, what is the zoning administrator, what was their interpretation, what, what relief was granted, zoning board?
Specifically.
Specifically, and, and then sort of relatedly, is there some other reason why those zoning standards would not apply here?
Yeah, and I think we'd also want to hear more from the engineer regarding the lot lines.
Yeah, absolutely.
The information. All right. Want to take a shot at?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Barley?
I'd like to make a motion to table new business number 10 site plan. And we would table this application for the purpose of receiving additional input on two, two issues in particular. One being the, the scope of the relief that was granted by the zoning board of appeals, and also just the applicability generally of NRO 190 52 to this application. And we would like to get input from the zoning administrator on those points. And then, in addition, we would like to get further information input from the applicant, the engineer, with respect to the, the appropriate lot lines, as they apply to this property in the butters, and any impact that has on the application. And I would just add, as I mentioned already, that, you know, that the purpose, you know, of our reconsideration of these issues at, at the following meeting would be limited to these issues, generally speaking, and, and as for the testimony, if we were to reopen the public hearing. And I would just clarify that the, the, the motion to table would be to our November 21st meeting.
All right, so we have a motion to table, Mr. Barley, with the additional information regarding the, what we're looking for, for information into the 21st. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Okay. So, moving on. So, moving on, new business site plans, number 13, that's postponed until December 5th meeting. Next up, other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at these technical review meeting minutes here, and have any concerns about their regional impact, or make a motion as to such? Nope. Want to make a motion?
She asked me, if I had looked at it, I said, no.
Well, take a look at it and make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Ballinger?
There are no upcoming projects of regional impact, based on technical review meeting of October 7th, 2019.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Ballinger that there are no proposals currently of regional impact. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. We have other business, case number two. The, this is like proposed meeting deadlines for next year. We've got that packet in here. So, I'd say maybe everybody take a quick look in particular. I mean, don't worry about the review, and, but look at the meeting dates and see if there are any particular concerns with, with any of these dates. I'm trying to see, do we know, sometimes they, like, the school vacation weeks are bad for public and stuff like that?
Yeah, we try to stay away from those.
Stay away from those?
February 20th.
February 20th.
February, April vacation.
That's just before school break.
That's before, okay, so that's okay.
Yeah, April's good, too.
April's fine. May, June, July. Now, July 9th, is that the week of the 4th?
I think it's the week after.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fourth falls.
It's a Thursday.
It's. Uh, July 4th is on a Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
So, this is the.
Ooh.
After.
No, no, I'm saying, our meeting is on Thursday, so.
I was even saying the 4th is on Thursday.
No, no, no.
You're way off.
Way off. It's, it's way off.
Over 22nd, November 19th.
Going back five days.
And when's Thanksgiving this, next year? That's.
27th.
26th, yeah. So, that's fine, the 19th, yeah. Now, I don't see anything here that, does anybody have any concerns on any of the dates?
No.
No, looks good. All right. If they look good, someone will make a motion to accept them as proposed, or?
I will make a motion to accept the meeting dates as proposed for 2020.
All right, so a motion to accept the proposed 2020 meeting dates by Ms. Harper. Any second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay. Good. And then we have just left other business a referral of proposed R19 dash 178. This is that sale of land for 141, 143 Burke Street to Loyal Holdings LLC for 3.9 million.
Yep, so back in 2015, the city had bought this property. It was going to be the home of a Department of Public Works, or Division of Public Works, that got changed. So, I think it was back in June, the planning board approved a subdivision. So, we're keeping about two and a half acres for the future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
And the rest of it, they're planning on selling, and they have a buyer for it now. So, we're asking for a favorable recommendation, so we can pass it on to the Board of Alderman.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Mr. Ballinger?
It's a seller's market. Is, is, is the 3.9 million fair market value? Are we taking a bath, or are we just giving it away, or?
Well, actually, when we, we bought it, it was a little bit bigger. I mean, we had a few more acres, and it was, I think it was just over 4 million.
For the entire parcel.
What's that?
For the entire parcel.
Yeah, for 4.2. I think it was 4.2 originally, and now it's like, yeah. And now it's like 3.9.
I asked it a little facetiously, but it, it, there was some, there was some rationale for the, the price that, the, the final negotiated price. It was.
Right, right. And I'm sure we'll be seeing something coming in here in the future for that, that parcel.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Back on the tax roll. Another question?
Yeah, back on the tax roll.
Schedule.
Yeah, you just got it.
So, anybody want to make a motion? I reminded, we, we usually make a motion to either, for a favorable recommendation, or non-favorable, and then we can pass along. All right, Mr. Barley?
I would make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation on R19 178 to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, so we have a motion to pass on a favorable recommendation for case number three, other business case three. And does anybody have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay. That is all I have on the agenda. Does anybody else have any, I didn't, they want to discuss?
This fits in the envelope.
I just got to say that I went to that, another one of those meetings, and it was really interesting. It was on roads and stuff like that, so it talked, it, it went, it really went into a lot more detail. It was two hours long. And it was one of those that you get workshops.
Anything specific?
It talked about commercial, talked about private roads, what private roads in the, and why different aspects of the road you have to deal with. It was a workshop. I forgot the notes and everything. But there's more coming up. There's a few more that are going to be coming up, that are going to be, could be, I believe, the NRPC is going to have a workshop on municipality roads and stuff like that. You're actually going to be able to talk and, to the DOT of New Hampshire to ask questions about any roads that are pertinent coming up. We have some roads that, that are, are going to be, like, Exit 5 is coming in, going to be coming in, not too far away. They're going to be working on that. So, if you have questions about any roads, go to that meeting. It's right over here, at 30 Temple Street. And let me check on my phone. I think I have it down there, dated. Yep. DOT Highway Public Forum, 30 Temple Street, 23rd.
This month?
This month, and on next Wednesday.
May I add to that conversation? They recently had a meeting right here in this room discussing the 10-year transportation plan. And there were a lot of things going on, but one thing that affects us is between, for the next 10 years, from Nashua to Concord, they're going to be working on the Everett Turnpike, widening it. So, that's a long-term construction project. And if you're driving that way, it'll really affect your life.
Me.
All right, good. Anything else? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn for Mr. Ballinger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 11:23.
Okay.